All right, I'll call to order this special meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 624. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Chapman.
Here.
Fahy, here. Kimball?
Here.
Mullin?
Here.
Newburg?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
Wilson.
Out of his chair, but here.
All right. Well, we've invited a representative from the Minnesota School Boards Association to be with us tonight to assist us in our search for our new superintendent. This is purely an educational system. We're here to listen to Sandy, to what she has to say. And I want to have this as informal as possible. So if any board members want to ask a question during Sandy's presentation, don't raise your hand and ask me permission, just direct your questions right to Sandy and I'm sure she'll call on you. Any questions about procedure before we move forward? All right. Sandy, what is your last name again?
I'm Gunlock.
Gunlock. Well, welcome and thank you for coming out in the terrible weather to be with us tonight. So, thank you. Go ahead.
All right. Well, it's nice to be here. You know, just a little bit about myself. In my, I've been working for the Minnesota School Boards Association for about 12 years. I'm a former school board member. I served on the board at Saint Peter School Board for two turns in the 1990s. And then after that, I applied for and was hired by the Illinois Association of School Boards. So I've worked for Illinois, or actually Springfield, Illinois, for about five years. And one of my duties there was to conduct superintendent searches. I was responsible for 150 school districts and during that time I conducted 35 superintendent searches in areas of the state that I served. So I have a pretty good background in superintendent searches and also having been a school board member. After about five years, I applied for and I worked for and was offered a job at the National School Boards Association. Worked there for about three and a half months before something came up in Saint Peter, which was really lucky for me because my family never left Saint Peter. So I commuted every weekend for five years from either Springfield, Illinois, or even from DC when I could. So it was nice to be able to come back home and live with my family in Saint Peter where the office is located. So, but anyway, that's a little bit about my story. Could I just do a quick round robin? I know you gave your last names, but if you could mention your first name and then just if you could say how long you've been on the board. Because before I do that though, how long has Mike been here? Has he been here six years, eight years?
He started in 2008.
This is the beginning. It was ninth.
Nine, okay. Nine years. Okay. Been nine years by the time he retires then. Okay.
And then it'll be eight.
Eight?
Eight years.
This is nine here.
He started in 2008, didn't he? I believe so.
Okay, so he's had his three, three-year contracts and he said that's how, the good way to gauge it, that's how we think about it too. How many contracts was that? Were they two or three years? Okay. And you're Kim?
Kim Chapman. Been on the board. This is completing my seventh year.
Okay. So you've been new then since Mike was hired?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Hi.
Scott.
Scott.
Completing my 10th month.
Oh, you're a real newbie then. Great. Well, nice to meet you.
I'm Dawn. This is completing my first term, so I'm on my 30th year, 4th year.
Okay. Nice to meet you too.
Marge, new master, and I'm also someone who started last January. And at that point, I retired after 45 years in the district as a teacher and media specialist.
Okay, great. Nice to meet you.
George Campbell, and I think this is your 11th.
Your 11th year, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're on your 3rd term.
So you were on the board when Mike was hired?
Yes.
And I'm the second oldest.
Okay.
I'm Janet and this is my 10th year. So I was also on the board during the previous superintendent search.
Super.
I'm Ellen and this is my first year on the board.
Well, you have a nice mix though of new, you know, and new and veteran board members. So you've got a couple of people with experience, previous experience with the superintendent search. So that could be something very handy as you move forward. But anyway, we'll get started here. There's much to talk about. Really, everything for tonight's, for tonight's presentation is, is in this booklet. And then also, you should also have a copy of the MSBA MASA Model Policy 406, which is the public meetings and private meetings, no, public and personnel and private personnel data policy. But to get us started though, what I'd just ask you to do is if you open the booklet to the Table of Contents page, now at the bottom of the page, there's a little box down there titled "The Do's and Don'ts of Hiring a Superintendent." If you would just read the do's and don'ts. These basically are your eight principles of an effective superintendent search, really. So if you keep yourself focused on these items as we move forward, we'll flesh things out in a little more detail on each of the steps, or at least the steps that we recommend at MSBA. And what I should say is that our recommendations on conducting a superintendent search are based on the fact that MSBA's been around for 95 years. And so they've been watching and observing, not us, but others before us, you know, have observed superintendent, board superintendent relations, our knowledge of Minnesota law, rules, regulations, federal law, rules, regulations, roles and responsibilities, and things that work and really don't work. And then also feedback from our colleagues in the other state school board associations. So it's kind of like a comprehensive kind of approach. So we'll provide what we call our best practices as we work forward. You know, with the understanding that if you, down the road, if you decide to hire a consultant to help you with a search, they may tinker with it a little bit. That's not uncommon. But really, the steps of the process are pretty much the same, no matter how you go about it. So, but the very first thing though is, you know, one of the most important things about the superintendent search is to develop a plan, develop the plan upfront. And that includes, you know, getting your timeline set, having good, solid hiring criteria, talking in advance about how you'll involve stakeholders, writing it all down on a sheet of paper, and then working that plan through to its completion. It's really about having a good process and then following the process and trusting the process along the way. It really, it almost always works if you all are on the same page as you move forward. So determining your district's needs first would be a really key piece.
I think Scott had it.
I'm sorry.
Did we interrupt?
Yeah, please do because that's usually how it happens. And we'll just be flipping around. I'm very, it's not really linear for me.
You may well come to this point, but because we're going to be so fastidious in following the procedures for getting the best superintendent for our district, say the best candidates are gone, they've been hired by other districts. What would you recommend then? That we go an interim superintendent route until we can find the one that we truly want?
Yeah, you know, first of all, I would just mention this, is that the typical superintendent search takes between four to, three to six months to complete. So you're at a good point now getting to get started. I wouldn't want to see you sitting on your hands though for the next month. I'd like to see, I'd like, I would be hoping for you that you'd have it advertised probably, at least by maybe the holidays or the early January. But I would just say, first of all, trust the process all the way through to its end. But if you get to the end, and on the don't side, you get to the end and you can't, you're not sure, or you just feel like it's not the right fit, don't hire the best of the worst. You know, it's okay to disband the search and hire an interim for a year. And then get out early the next year and do it again. But, and I think you do bring up an interesting point because it's an interesting time right now for superintendent searches in Minnesota. I've never seen so many openings so early. And the openings that are already posted are large districts, kind of like your size. Eastern Carver County's open, Elk River's open, West St. Paul just announced, Adina's open. St. Paul's looking, although that's a different, your size district. But still, you draw from the same
Pool.
Pool of applicants. And there are probably two or three others, more than that even, some that aren't really even announced or might be coming down the pipeline. So, I mean, so you have, there's going to be a lot, I think there'll be a lot of competition as your four-year size district type superintendents. So the sooner you, I think you can, in a thoughtful way, organize yourself and get started, I think it'll be to your advantage. But the good thing here is it seems like, you know, when it, when people are looking, you know, from my experience, and what we have observed, is that, you know, there are a lot of factors that go into a decision for a candidate to decide to apply for a particular job. You know, one of them is location. That's really important. So you're in a nice, really great location, it's growing, there's, you know, I mean, and that comes with this unique challenges. You can talk about that later if you want. You know, so there's, there's a piece about location. You know, there's district reputation, you know, what are your, you know, and that means academics, that means, you know, but it also means how you get along with each other, how you get along with the superintendent, and how you get along in the community piece. So, I mean, you can assess that, but that's a real important part. But the other piece that gets people off the mark is the salary piece. So since we're, I'm kind of jumping all over the place, so something I would encourage you to think about, and you know, and if you work with a consulting firm, they may have just different ideas of it. But, but I was trained in Illinois by the folks who have been conducting superintendent searches for like 50 years. And one of the things that they, we always did on almost every search, and the 35 searches that I conducted in Illinois, all but two listed at least some kind of a salary as an enticement to draw attention to the, to that particular search. And if you look at this when you have time, you know, it just suggests that you have a minimum amount where you begin and you work up from there, or where you might have like a maximum amount, whatever that amount is, or a range. But it's always commensurate with negoti, it's negotiable experience and qualification. So I'd really, I'd really kind of challenge you to take a good, hard look at that as a way to market your position. But anyway, so did that answer your question?
Yeah.
But I think, but once you get something in, have confidence and trust in it and work it through. And then kind of, if you have to step back, that maybe happens, but, you know.
Okay.
Yep. All right, the other thing that I would want to just mention about it is, you know, I'd like to hit the don'ts over here in the don't side. I already hit the, don't hire the worst of the best, or the best of the worst, I mean, excuse me. I knew that was wrong. But you know, the second item down is, you know, every, every, almost every school district has at least one other employee who is licensed, has a, holds a superintendent's license. And so the thing that we always recommend is that, that internal applicants apply for the job just like external applicants. That there not be any favored or special treatment, that everybody go through the same process internally and externally. In fact, we actually have another square at the bottom of page four that addresses the internal applicant's piece. Don't overlook them. But, you know, the best search to do your due diligence as a board would be for you to advertise internally and externally, narrow it down to the ones who stand out in the pool, who best meet your hiring criteria, bring them in for a first interview, a second interview, check references, maybe make a site visit to the top person, and then offer the job to the person who stood out in the pool. Maybe that's an internal, if an internal person applies, and maybe not. I've seen it go both ways. So if there are internal people, best thing for the board would be to just sort of hands off and just remind them that, you know, there's a process. Here's where you can go to apply if you're interested, but make no promise of interviews or of the job. It's just better for everybody all around. And it is uncomfortable for internals if they apply, you know. I would feel uncomfortable, but you know, except I've asked them. But at the end of the day, if they are offered the job, they just stand stronger in the eyes of the staff and the community by far. It's a better thing all around.
I know that some of us on this, we've been talking, how does that gel with what you're saying with districts that are now kind of hiring people purposely to have them then step into the superintendent? Because they're in, doing some research on the subcommittee, there have been districts around us like South Washington that looked at internal candidates. Mounds View actually hired someone that they put in for the, in terms of doing that also. How does, you know, because it seems like from research that more districts seem to be moving that way?
You know, I think one way to think about that would be, we've seen that work in situations where there's, it's almost like a year in waiting type of thing, where they're, they've actually hired someone who would be titled like the superintendent in waiting or superintendent-elect. Someone who, and they've gone through a whole process, just like a normal, regular superintendent search would go through. That way they, I'm not sure if that's getting at where you're going with it or not.
No, just, yeah, in terms of with getting some information about this, there seem to be districts that are now looking at their internal candidates first.
Right, and that may-
Which seems to would contradict to what you just told us.
Right. And I, our viewpoint on that is that from an EEOC perspective, it's, the district is in a stronger position if they advertise internally and externally. But we do know that there are some districts, as you've mentioned, that have just decided to look internally first. And if that's, then that's their decision to do that. You know, I'm not going to say shame on them or anything like that, you know, because, you know, they probably have given good consideration and thought through pros and cons, et cetera. But, but I'm here to represent MSBA's position tonight and that's, it's always better if you can get out there and conduct a search and take a look at both internal and external applicants. And it does help satisfy that EEOC concern.
It is the board's decision, clearly. Would you have any sort of general advice about hiring someone with no superintendent experience over someone that does?
Yeah, you know, that's a really great question. Because when you look at, gosh, I wish I had my superintendent history book with me. It's really interesting to look at that sometimes. It's interesting to me, the number of districts that hire, and the size of district, that sometimes hire people without experience. And if they are lined up with really good mentors, you know, you know, because most of them will come from districts where they've been, you know, worked closely with their sitting superintendent and have maybe some relationships with other superintendents. So they come with this network. And if they are mentored and, and are, you know, because the other piece of that is maybe where you might be going with that is that in experience that I think we have noticed is that one of the board's biggest concern is with hiring someone without experience is that whole finance piece, you know, and the worry that someone without experience would, you know.
Rec the book.
Yeah, rec the book, yeah. But, but really, if they have good mentors, you know, MASA has a good mentor program. They've got the, the superintendents that they probably worked with would be service-grade mentors to help them along that way through that first year of everything. And so really, I mean, for the most part, you know, yeah, there can be blips in the road for, in some cases, but, I mean, there's been some pretty good, big-sized districts out there that have hired people with no previous superintendent experience. And really, they, they do well with, with growth and mentoring and some, you know, good staff development and pats on the back and those kinds of things.
In that situation, would you recommend extending an interim contract to someone with no experience? And then see how it goes after a year?
You know-
Or just hire outright?
Yeah, you know, I, I think that, you know, in, in most cases for someone to give up a position, you know, superintendents really don't have any tenure rights, you know. And when you accept a superintendency, you can't really straddle those two, hanging on to an old principalship or something like that in another district. You really have to let go of something. So, and then the other piece is, is that while you can't require someone to live in the district, you know, sometimes folks want to live in the district. That means relocating. Well, a lot of people, superintendents, they'd be reluctant to take, you know, settle on a position that if it's for an interim position, like one-year contract.
Yeah.
They really would be looking for, to make that commitment for three years. Because that's the most frequently, most superintendent contracts are three-year contracts.
Right.
And then there are some, then the next most common would be two-year. And then, but there are some one-year, but I don't think anybody would come here on a one-year contract. That's not really a true interim position type of thing. Because an interim position would be something for a year and then they go do something else and then you'd have your regular superintendent in place after a year.
Kind of on the same, looking at all the different variables. I paid that close an attention in the past to lots of districts and how people ascend to different positions. But it seems like a lot of people do the usual administrative rise from principal to assistant to sometimes a su- I mean, I have a friend, she's not applying here, but she's in a big district and that's her final goal. And she's an assistant now. And so do lots of districts have that position?
Well, lots of districts of a certain size have that type size, that type position. You know, a lot of smaller districts don't have assistant superintendents. But, but districts here in the cities, in, you know, those larger urban centers, you know, like the St. Clouds and even when you get into districts the size of, you know, 2,000, 3,000 students maybe have assistant superintendents who may be looking to advance.
Because I mean, just logically, every superintendent at one point had no experience.
Yeah, everybody's a newbie at some point. Yeah. So somebody, yeah, takes a risk on everybody at one point or another. But part of it is, is, you know, what's the, who are their mentors? And do they understand, or do they have confidence in themselves enough to recognize when they need help? And then that they'll seek it and not see it in themselves as being a, as a negative, you know, but as a positive thing, you know, get the help you need when you need it and the board's providing that to help you get there. Okay. Okay, looking at the, if you turn to page one, beginning the search, you know, the most important thing, another thing to think about as you plan the searches is that it's going to cost you, it's going to cost a district, it'll cost you money, one way or another. If you hire a consultant, it will just cost you more. You know, if you, if you do this, and I will kind of try to do it this way. There's a search, if you hire a consultant to help you, that, that person or persons will help you with every step along the way. If you decide not to hire a consultant to help you, then that would mean that the district would be your helper. You know, because when we say that you decide to do the search yourself, we really don't mean the seven of you on your own doing the search. You really have to rely on, on your staff to help you. So with staff, staff help, okay?
Do you have any statistics at all as far as districts using consultants versus totally doing it in-house and all that?
Yeah, you know, by-
Teach for them?
Yeah, we do a little bit. I don't have the exact number, but my, I think it's probably close to 80% of districts of, the larger districts, especially around the metro area and in the larger district outstate, would hire a consultant to help them with the search. It's probably closer to 35 or 40% of the smaller districts would hire consultants. And it sort of depends on the year. One year it was, even for the smaller districts, it was over 50%. And then the next year, not as, as high. So it really just all depends on who's looking that year and their finances or whatever factors come into play.
As an adjunct to that, do you have data on the continuation of superintendents that were selected by search firms?
Oh, we don't have that by specific search firms. I thought you were going to ask just in general terms.
In general, I mean, if the search firm was-
Well, I do in general terms because we studied that this past year.
Now, what's, what's the likelihood that those superintendents will be continued?
Well, what I can tell you is based on, that's an interesting factor. I'll look at, I'll have to look at the placement thing at, maybe next year when I look at the data. But based on the 2015-16 school year, we looked at, at the September data when all of the superintendents were in their positions, you know, for the year. And we learned that the average length of tenure for a superintendent in Minnesota was 5.65 or 5.75 years, because it's almost two contracts, two, three-year contracts. And then when we took out the folks in year one or two of a contract, then it just looked at those three or more years, it jumped up to over, like to 7.25% or something. And then what, then we were really curious, okay, what happens if you take out the first two contracts? Because we have a lot of superintendents in Minnesota that are in their districts nine years, you know, 10. There's a big class of folks in, in the same district for, hired in their same positions for 10 years this past year, 11 years, 14, and we even had a couple that were like 17 and 18 years. So when we took out the, the first two, three-year contracts, then it jumps up way over, to way over 10 years. I mean, so we have pretty good tenure in Minnesota. You know, once you, but we do have a, would probably be higher, except we've got those districts that once in a while do kind of shift around quite a bit. But even they settle down after a while. I could see that in the, in the data.
For clarification regarding tonight's discussion, when you talk place, or consulting firm, are you synonymously talking placement firms and, because I draw the distinction between a consultant, somebody that's basically guiding or, or, you know, advising versus somebody that is going out and, you know, doing, conducting a search. So when you mentioned the percentages there, are we talking, you know, both thrown into one grouping or?
Well, when I'm talking about the consultants, you hire a consultant, it would probably be the people who go out and help you find the people.
Okay.
You know, whether it's, you know, through brochures and mailings or, or, you know, phone calls or-
So assisting with the actual search itself?
It's really people assisting with the actual search itself. You've got an extra set of hands to help you at every step of the way and it frees up your staff and it frees you up to focus on what you really need to go.
But are these people that get like, that are compensated? I mean, because, you know, these professional search firms, you know, can garner some big bucks.
Yeah.
Are you, you know, talking that in the mix too or?
Yeah, you know, I think it really varies quite, it can vary. You know, it probably would be, my guess would be, it probably would, here might be about 15,000 or more, depending on the amount of, a lot of it turns on the amount of community engagement that you, you have. Because that means that the person would be in district, or people would be in district more, visiting with people, listening, those kinds of things. And whether or not it also includes, you know, their travel expenses and that kind of stuff. So I imagine that, you know, you know, 20 to 25,000 should be able to buy, or less than that, depending. You know, if someone comes in from out of state, of course, it'll be more expensive then. Because then you have to do, you know, pay for the, that would have to be figured out in the mix. But you know what, probably, you probably would want to just say you're going to set aside maybe 20,000 or-
If we went the route.
If you went that route.
And just, first, I guess I didn't, I didn't quite follow what the distinction between the two different types of consultants that you're servicing. Were you talking about Kim?
Well, what I was thinking is, you know, hiring somebody, kind of like we were talking, the three of us, that would be more of a, in an advisory role, kind of coordination role, that type of thing. You know, and not getting so much heavily into the finding the candidates type stuff. Whereas, you know, you have these search firms that, you know, pretty much can do everything you want them to do if you're willing to pay for it.
And that, that was going to be my question, then I, Sandy, there might be, that I believe perhaps MSBA is one of them that offers a different levels of services.
Right. I think there, there are some that do. I think maybe what you might be getting at is what's, you know, it's, it's more of a philosophical approach. Because I think that there are, well, some folks of what I would call search consultants who actually help you do what you're talking about, but that are not, I think really, sometimes at the end of the day, it gets to, it's about whether they have a stable of candidates that they can move around from place to place or not.
Recruitment.
And what, and what that might look like.
Right.
That might be a piece of where that is going in that, in your background of your question. And, you know, so that's, that's, you know, if you decide to go the route where you want to have, actually, it's beginning on page one there, using a consultant. If you decide that you want to entertain the concept of consult, having consultants help you, what you might do is identify some consulting firms, ask them to submit a proposal to you and then have them come in, visit with you, and then you would interview them just like you would, you know, your superintendent candidate. Questions are different. But one of the questions would be is, how do you see yourself guiding us through this search? Because either way, you're looking, you would be looking for someone to help guide, facilitate, or lead you from here to there. It's just that their approach, there can be some different approaches to how you get there. Whether it is at the stable where they actually say this is who it is, or- Whether it is at the stable where they actually say this is who it is, or, or is there a process where, you know, that they might still gather, you know, they're still helping to look for it, but they're not relying on past people. They're creating a new search for each opening that comes along. A new, I mean, they're creating a new pool for each opening that comes along rather than recycling through people. And I think that might be a little bit of underlying what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Because you're still looking for the help, but there's.
You know, how much control you're willing to give or not give to a particular consultant or whatever you want to call them, search firm or whatever.
That would definitely be a question that you would want to ask in your interviewing, you know, is what is your approach? How does that kind of thing happen? Go ahead.
Because I think when we had that discussion too about help, having someone help guide us through the process so we don't have to rely on district employees and overload them. But in talking to board members from two other districts that had used search firms and them saying they wouldn't do it again because of their frustrations that there was a stable of candidates that they seemed to move from place to place and after the three-year contract was up, that superintendent in their district was being contacted with, we've got a different job for you that will give you more money.
Churning candidates, yeah.
The frustration that they didn't see all the people that applied. There was also frustration that one of the search firms, the applications that were given to the board members did not contain all the information, they had taken things out. So I think when we discuss that in terms, we certainly do not want to overload our district employees, but in terms of doing surveys and community input, getting someone to help us facilitate that and forming a screening committee where I just, being a new board member, I, and actually we got a letter saying you can talk to these people and I contacted them and a board member that I know from being on another board. I was just very interested to find out their experience with some of the search firms and these are long, long-term board members, so.
Yeah, you know, MSP is always in these processes when we come in and talk like this. You know, if you do decide to, let's say you did, let's fast forward and you decided you wanted to work with a search firm. But one of the questions would be is, will we get access to all of the applications? Because really as a board, you have a right to know the names, at least the names of all the people who applied. And, and we even believe that, you know, there's a, you have the right to review all of them before, otherwise how do you really know? Because sometimes board members, I have, you know, we conduct searches and we have, I have, you know, sometimes you see things that we, you know, we don't see or you have knowledge of. Of people we may not have knowledge of, and the same would be true for other people. So I mean, if you decide to do something like that, that would be a real important question and you'd have to make clear to them that your expectation is that you would see all the, at least see all the names or whatever it is, so that at the end, there's not a fight over the data. Because I think that's what happens, some cases there's a fight at the end over the data. You know, and then there's always has to be that balance point of, yeah, I mean, but I, I think you're a professional board that you understand how to maintain privacy of personnel data and student data. You're already used to the idea of talking about candidates as A, B, X, Y, and Z. And, and I'm guessing you have procedures that are pretty tight in terms of protecting all of the applications of all of the other employees that you've ever received. You know, you could set procedures in place that would protect all that data. And, and so, you know, I don't know that I would completely give up on the search firm. You might want to take a look, look at it, see if it's possible. But if that's a, something that is a, if, if having access to all of the names is, is that red line in the sand, then you need to know about that going in and that would help provide more clarity. Because then that's, that is your checkpoint to the stable of applicant's piece. I mean, that's what we tell people, our board members.
This is Kim's initial question quite some time ago and then Ellen's observations. These firms that tend to shop stables of candidates around, to my mind, that begs the question, you know, who's your client? Is it us or is it the candidate they're seeking to place?
Yeah.
You know, and is that a fair question?
That's a fair question.
Okay.
It's a, it's a concern that we've had and, you know, because we could see evidence of movements in that regard too. So I mean, it's really, I think you just need to, as a board, give consideration, okay, you've got work that needs to be done to help you get there. You can't do it yourself, you have to have someone help you at some point. So if it's, if it's a matter of bringing in a couple of groups to ask them the questions and see if you can find someone that will do it the way you want it done, which is to see the data. Or if not that route, then is there a way to work with, to go back to your term that you used earlier? You kind of were kind of, and now I may be seeing that, you might also be thinking about, there's another type of consultant who is just there to help you with the front-end loading of it and then getting out of the way for the backend part, which is once you get all the applications, it's on you to kind of go from, to complete the process. You might actually be looking for someone to help you here to get, help you plan it, this, I think as you said very well, to help you plan it, to help you get your hiring criteria in place, get a good schedule, facilitate all your community stuff so your staff doesn't have to do that and then you don't have to do that. Consolidate all that information, share it back to you, help you get, you know, develop the brochure, post it out there and then basically get out of your way so that you have a, because you probably have an AppleTrack type system or some online system that can receive the applications if you decide to go that way. I mean, then you'd have to kind of look to see what you have in place. But even so, at the end of the day, if you do do any of the work at all on your, on your own, and I don't mean on your own, but the, but the district tells, you still have to have someone who is a highly confidential employee oversee the process. You know, just to make sure that someone's answering people's questions about the district so that if, if you're using something like an AppleTrack, if there's a glitch with uploading, you know, because they upload all of their information and something like that, so you've got, depending how much information it is, sometimes they have problems with it or the form's not showing for this reason or that reason. You need people who can, you know, your tech person or someone take care of that, go ahead.
Well, I mean, that sounded like it could be our HR department.
Yeah, it probably, if that's, HR people are highly confidential employees. And, and they would be, one of the most important things the person would do, besides making sure those other things happen, is track the, track the forms for completeness. I tell you, that's, that's a big job, you know, it, because it, it's not, you're not going to want to look at anybody who didn't provide all the required paperwork. And you shouldn't, because that means first rule, they didn't follow that piece. So, you know, so half your people could be gone right away in some searches, because they just didn't do everything. So you need someone to track that.
And then just, depending on which of those, like you just talked about, the front-end loader kind of person versus the, I think that would be two different pools, so the initial advertising for them would be different, you know, right? Or do some of those firms offer that front loading? I'm just thinking of if we pursue one or the other, it's a different message.
Yeah, I think that if you, I think one of the things you probably have to do, because most of, the first decision you have, you're going to make is whether you're going to do this alone with your staff help or hire someone else, because then it'll, then you, you know, you go into a different silos basically. And so you don't want to waste any time with that. So the first thing you probably have to really do is decide if you want to have the full service piece. And if you want the full service piece, then, and you find the person who will agree to do it your way, you know, what are those red lines in the sand pieces? Then, then you've got it, you've got the good start, then it's a matter of getting the first meeting down and get it started. But if you find that that is not possible, then the backup that you might, trying to think, is there a way you could ask both things at the same interview? Ask, you know, if, here's our full service and then the next piece is? Or, you know, would, would you ever entertain doing things more piecemeal, like that front-end, a front-end load piece? And then you'd have all of the information and you could decide as a board at that time. Either way, you're going to need some help of some kind, it sounds like. It's just a matter of how much outside help do you, do you actually want with your philosophy? That's kind of like what I'm kind of starting hearing. It's a lot for your staff to do that kind of thing.
Doesn't your request normally, it can, the parameters can be put in a request for proposal, can't they and say?
Yeah, you'd put in a, you know, and you might have like an, you know, I'd have to look at that, you know, you might have an A proposal and then you might have the B one, it, you know, you know, the only problem is, is that it might look, make you look like you're kind of wishy-washy, but, but in a way, it's not really that way. You're still kind of just gathering all the data to make the best choice of which direction to go in.
You could ask for an à la carte proposal.
That's a good way to put it, yes.
Various components.
So here, if you did the full search and here, what are some other things that you might be, if we wanted to do a part of our search, here's our, the, break it out for us. That's a good way, à la carte part, yeah, full service and an à la carte.
And in my job at the subcommittee, when I spoke to Linda Gores, she had indicated she would help with those RFPs and, you know, the AppleTrack, if we went that way.
You have a tremendous HR director.
You know, that's really good. The only, the only downside of going with someone in-house is it's, it's even when they're great people is it's, they're still hiring the person who will be their supervisor. It's that supervisor subordinate piece that, you know, you have to give some consideration to, you know.
That's for request for proposal.
I would just let that hang out there and have that be part of your overall, at the end of the day, discussion. But, but in districts where, that are of that certain size, that conduct their own searches, it probably is because they have a strong HR person who can help them, the board oversee it and they just, to be, you know, to be perfectly honest.
I'm just going to take a step back and make a comment for the good of the order here. I am in no way sick physically, no fever, no earaches, no excess flammer mucus. I just have an extraordinarily dry throat at the time, which is why I've gone through nearly two bottles of water since we've been here. So breathe easy, guys, you're not going to catch anything, all right?
I didn't even notice.
Yeah, I know, I got some elbow room now.
And we'll be here for a while, I mean, people feel free to run out, get more water, visit the facilities, whatever you need to do, so.
Get a flask.
Yeah.
Well, that's very.
No, one thing I would urge you though, this is, it's November twenty-second today. And so, one of the first things, you know, it would be really smart for you to get that request for proposal out there as soon as possible so that you could get that taken, that's that first big decision. Don't be sitting here trying to make that decision still in January, you will lose too much time, I think. I mean, I think you, you know, there's that sense of urgency like there is in any search, but you have still a lot of time. But you won't have a lot of time if you, like I said before, if you take too much time off. And it's a little bit harder now with the holidays coming on too, you've got Thanksgiving, you've got that quiet time around, you know, at the end of December, that, right? And so, so the thinking about the consultant piece would be real important, get that, you know, try to have something, you know, I, it seems like a reasonable thing to try to do something like, like by the fifth or sixth or something of, of December. Really, once you ask consultants for proposals, they'll turn them around really quickly. And when you call to ask for the proposal, it's always a nice way to do that as well. Or when you send the call, send the sheet of paper out, ask requesting it, just tell them that, you know, you'd also be expecting someone from, to come and address the board at a meeting. And so, you know, accomplish two things at once, the request, turn it around within. You know, I've, I've sometimes seen them turned around within, I've noticed that when these come over across our desk. Sometimes, you know, you have, you have to turn it around in three days or five days and sometimes you might have two weeks. But it wouldn't take two weeks, but, you know, you can get it out there and get it back and have something decided maybe by, fifteenth of December easily, probably.
This is a question for our search subcommittee. We're in month zero, right? We haven't accomplished, if you look at the timeline on the top of page, we have not achieved any of those items yet, right?
That's right, no. We brought Sandy here, that was step one.
Yeah, but keep in mind that, you know, this is kind of stretched out, but the typical search can really runs three to six months. So, you know, the further you get in the school year, then we've seen them condensing. You know, a six-month search is something that probably starts in September. You know, with all the planning and community engagement. And then they develop the hiring criteria and then they're actively searching probably and like a lot of districts are right now. But it, there's a good chance that with your search, if, you know, if you, if you think about it being open four months even, it'd be about a month of planning it and then two months where you're receiving applications. And then the last month would be a combination of deciding who you're going to, who you'll interview, conducting the first interviews, second interviews, reference checks in between the first and second interview, a site visit. All of that takes about a month. And really, once you get to, you know, a typical timeline would be the application deadline. Let's just kind of play, just for kicks, say, you know, February, March first. So then if March first is the application deadline, then if you work with a consultant, the consultant would, would look at those applications probably the next day if they haven't been looking at them up till that point. And then they'd spend about a week, maybe conducting, verifying references, maybe conduct pre-interviews, narrow it down to five or six people they, they think best meet your hiring criteria. It's your, and that's one of those interview questions, who's criteria will you use to decide who rises to the top? Our criteria or your own? Yeah, I mean, so that's one of the things you have to be careful of. But once they have that list, those people, they focus on that for about a week and then they would return to the district and then present those five or six people or whatever number of people stood out in the pool, they'd be presented to the board. And then based on, if you decided to do the search yourself, then of course you would have reviewed all of the applications because you can if, if it's your search, if you run your search. If you work with a consultant and, and you've talked through that procedure, they would, would send them to the district or provide you the codes so that you can go online into AppleTrack or whatever system they're using so that you could review them prior, at least review them. You'd still receive their recommendation, but you'd at least know who else is out there and have an opportunity to ask questions. So there's that piece, so that's the screening meeting and it's usually would be, I would say about a week after the application deadline passes. Then the first round of interviews should happen within a week. I mean, really the idea is keep the ball moving, once you, once it's closed. Don't take two weeks off or three weeks off in between, because then people are going to lose interest in you and they're going to go someplace else. So, you know, and, and really, it's not uncommon for, let's say for, if you work with a search firm or even for a board, to let's say decide on a Monday night, hypothetically, Monday night, March seventh. I don't even know if that's a Monday night or whatever this year, but let's say it is, to decide that night. Well, because you preset all of the dates for your search early on and you blocked them in, it's possible for you wait three months ago to have said, okay, we're going to decide Monday, the seventh, but we're going to conduct our first round of interviews that Friday, Saturday. So you get that first week, you've already got, you've decided who you're going to interview and then Friday, Saturday, you're conducting your first round of interviews. Before you go home on, on Saturday night, you're deciding who you're going to offer back for a second interview. And those are already the next week, so you've got the, so you could have been there the seventh, you've got seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth, you take Sunday off, of course. And then you're back, you're back at it maybe Tuesday for a second round of interviews where you might bring all three candidates in and we would suggest bringing back three people. Hopefully you'll get six, five or six people for first interview. And you narrow it down to about three people to bring back the second time. And it's good to have, it's good to have six because people drop out for lots of different reasons. And, and so if you start out with only four, out with four, you might have only two first round of interviews. So, you know, it's good to strive to get five or six if, if it's possible. And then for a second interview, we would always say two or three, but three is better because that's when you, it's even more chance that someone will drop out because they might be in another search someplace, in a district of similar size or whatever. And so if that's the next week, well then if you, once you've held, but in between, someone from the board, and we always think there should be someone from the board, MSBA speak now, but firms may not believe that way, but we think the board has to have some skin in the game even if a consultant is helping you. And because at the end, it's on your, it's on you and, you know, they're gone. And type of thing. I mean, they might be there to help you from the sideline, but you're the ones who take the heat over it. So you really need to have that, we think you should have that extra step, which is to verify references of that top two or three people you bring back in for the second interview. That's that kind of, that's that moral authority kind of thing, that due diligence. And then you hold your second round of interviews after the final second interview and then it's at that point, if you. And then it's at that point, if you follow the process that we recommend and, and also that's listed here, is that, um, two or three board members would travel to the community of the top candidate or candidates and conduct a site visit. And the site visit, you know, is something that you, it would also have been, um, set aside in your calendar upfront. Because at the planning meeting, you're gonna, you plan that whole thing out. And if you're, the site visit, um, once again, I was trained in Illinois and in Illinois, all of the searches conducted site visits. And I think the thing about it that I learned was that, um, you know, but from the beginning to the end of a search, there are five opportunities for a board to get to know the candidate who could become their superintendent. You know, it starts with the paper review of the, of the applications. That's all on paper though. But you're just getting a, a little bit of a sense who this person might be. Then you've got your first round of interviews. The reference checks in between, you know, of course, one person should, from the board should be doing that. So it's, it's planned and, you know, it's coordinated. But the information, uh, to the extent that it can be, would be shared with the board. So that's the third opportunity. The fourth opportunity would be second round of interviews. But the opportunity to really do the verification, the validation of everything is a site visit. And boards who do the site visit think that that's the most important part of the, the whole search. But I'd be very honest that not all boards do that. Even, I, I would say probably, um, about, wow, I'm thinking last year, probab, I could think of maybe four districts that conducted a site visit last year.
Thirty-five.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so most don't.
Well, actually of, um, well, no, I would say that when I, um, it, when I worked in Illinois in the thirty-five, they all did. Here in Minnesota, that's not as, as not as common. Sometimes, um, and so my, my thinking here is that based on what I've observed last year or the last couple of years here in Minnesota, I could think of four districts for sure that decided that they wanted to make the site visit. And they were, and they tend to do that oftentimes, especially if there are two candidates they feel equally strong about.
Hand him your bottles. He's gonna head out where there's clutter.
Almost.
Sorry, Sandy.
So the site visit can be a very, really, really valuable thing. Um, we always encourage boards to include that as part of their conversation. And, um, and at the end of the day, they may decide not to do it because they've had those other four opportunities to get to know the person and they feel like they, they really do feel good about their decision. And, and so, there's nothing wrong with not doing it. It's just one more step that can help get you to that validation. I think it comes from, I was influenced quite a bit by a, an office mate of mine one time in a district. She was a board chair. And they didn't conduct the, um, a site visit on one of their candidates. And, you know, you really know within six months if it's gonna work or not. And they would have found something, I think, that they would have.
And I've seen your materials on page, pages twenty and twenty-one. You have great sample site visit questions broken down and who you're talking to. Other school board members, administrators, citizens, teachers. It looks like that'll be very, very helpful.
Yeah, and I know you, that Ken's got a question too. I was just, before we move off this, that, this is the one thing, no, that, you know, you, it's not something that you can just do on your own. For it to be a good site visit, you have to have your candidate help you get in the school, you know? You know, I, I mean, yeah, I hate to say that. That's so obvious, but, you know, you, you know, it has to be coordinated through that person. You can't just show up. Otherwise, it's trespassing and stuff. You know, yeah. You know, but, but it's so much value and they do like it for so many reasons. But again, um, you know, there may be, uh, if you go with a search consult, consulting firm, they may not recommend it at all. It's, but we, but at MSBA, we believe it's the best practice. Um, you had something, Ken?
Actually, uh, this speaks to what my question was gonna be about in terms of the things to key in on during site visits. There was, if there was anything in particular you recommended, so this does get to that.
Well, you know, one thing that I, I, since you're bringing that up that I want, I'll talk about as we work our way a little bit more. Since we're kind of flipping back and forth through the book, you know, part of it, um, on page twelve, there's a whole list of don't ask. You know, there's a lot of things that you, you know, the protected categories that you're not, the related questions that you're not supposed to ask, you know, as part of, when you're conducting your interviews, that don't ask list applies at every step of the process, even on site visits. So, uh, it's important to keep that in mind.
Yeah.
Should we, as the board, give any credence to political motivations within the district? Or, you know, does it, sticking to the script, if you'll allow that, will that just, you know, kind of cut all that off? I've heard from a number of people that Minneapolis is highly politicized, whereas several other districts are really not at all, you know? And I think we're a lot closer to that, to the latter than we are the former. But, you know, like I said, as a board, should we really pay much attention to that?
And I'm not really, um, sure how to answer that.
Well, I'm thinking that the set of interview questions, if you, if you just follow that, we'll take care of that issue, you know? And if you don't stray off into, you know,
Oh, I think I'm.
Political leanings, you know, I think you'll be fine.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think that, um, you know, when you conduct the, like, the first round of interviews, the, all of the, and the questions should be well-betted to make sure that they're, you know, they don't have the don't ask stuff and that they're really gonna be helpful to get to what you need. And the same would be true with the second interview and even the site visit. And if you stick with those questions, then you, I think you won't get off into that whole, where you.
Well, you know, I thought of an example where the, the superintendent's raise should reflect the diversity of the district. That would be an example of one of those. And I'm just saying, I don't see that as an issue. Race should reflect the diversity of, of the, race, yeah. If you have a mostly black district, you should hire a black superintendent, that sort of thing, you know?
Well, I, yeah, I hear what you're asking. I think that, um, probably most, um, would probably, um, go by that, um, that, you know, that you're an equal employment opportunity.
Yes.
And, you know, in school district. And, and so, I guess that's how I would answer that one.
Well, I'm thinking that probably the, um, list of questions that we have will just keep that out of play entirely, you know, I would hope.
Sure, yeah. I, I, I think that at the end of the day, if you work with, um, let's say you decide to work with a consultant or a firm, they will look at the questions, to bet the questions, help you bet them so that they don't wander into an area that you don't want, that you shouldn't be going. You know, with the protected classes. And if you decide to conduct the, the search in-house with help, um, you know, I, it seems that you're, I would, I think I would probably feel confident that your HR person would also look at them to make sure that you're not gonna go someplace that you don't need to, that's not gonna add value to the conversation or could be one of those protected category areas.
Okay.
Does that help a little bit?
It does.
Yep. Um, and then, and then if you have other questions, you can send them to us and we'll look at them.
Okay.
And then, uh, give you some advice back. Okay, so, um, looking at this, uh, the, up on the top of page, it's sort of walked you through pretty quickly. You know, one month of planning, uh, two months, it's open, about two months open. And then that last month is really intensive work for the board. You'll be seeing each other quite a bit. To get to that, to the endpoint of offering, um, a contract. Another part of that upfront piece is, you're talking about, did anybody want to, are you okay just keep it on the move in here? Involving stakeholders on page three. It's real important to think about that upfront. Um, you know, there's, uh, boards do that, uh, do this in a lot of different ways. If you work with a consultant, they'll help you with, with this part of the process too, like we've already talked about. If you do the work yourself with staff's help or if someone outside helped you get to that front, it's mostly deciding what it is that you want done. Oftentimes, there's at least an online survey of some kind with some basic questions about the hiring criteria, the, you know, qualifications you believe are most important in the next superintendent, those kinds of things. And there may also be things like focus group meetings, uh, you know, with staff members and in, in buildings, depending on how many buildings you are, how that might be structured. There also may be, um, meetings with parents. There could be some one-on-one meetings with key community leaders. So a lot of that is something that will need to have some thought be given upfront and would be something that you'd wanna address it. If you, if you have a call for proposal, you might, um, include, make sure that community or stakeholder involvement kinds of opportunities are included in it so that you have people giving you feedback about what they might do to help facilitate that to happen in your district. Here's an example on page three. It's just a real simple, for developing the hiring criteria as a starting point. But really, the best starting point would be for you to pull out your strategic plan, review your strategic plan at a meeting. And then just say, here's, you know, what have we accomplished, what have we had yet to accomplish? And then get some feedback from Mike about what are those emerging issues that aren't reflected in the strategic plan? You know, because a strategic plan is, you know, a living, breathing document, but it's, other things sometimes come up that aren't really one of the goals yet. Because those are the things that the next superintendent will have to address, basically. But also along the way, it gives you a chance to congratulate, you know, I mean, to feel good about the things that you have accomplished in that strategic plan. So once you've, you know, reviewed the strategic plan, you might use something like, if you work with a consulting firm, they'll have something like this where they'll, you know, you'll start to flesh out some of those hiring criteria. And in fact, um, some, uh, sometimes we, we've actually know of boards that have used a form like this and then they use it themselves and then they've made it available to, um, the staff have filled it out. They've sent it home with student, you know, with, to parents. Um, other people fill it out and it's, it provides lots of different, additional information that can be used to either help develop the hiring criteria upfront or depending on the time of the year, if not, um, providing input on the development of the hiring criteria, the boards use it as a way to, um, as one more way to flesh out, if you will, possible interview questions, candidate interview questions. So there's lots of different ways that, um, candidate or stakeholder information can be used to help the process. It's not only about helping to develop the hiring criteria. In fact, a lot of boards, especially as you get, you move further in the school year, there's just not that time to do all that upgate, upfront engagement. But you just have to be very open and upfront with people that if you give input now, it'll be used for the development of the hiring criteria. I mean, uh, the, um, interview questions or help us develop them. The other things that are, um, we see a lot of, um, is, um, of course, you know, the board is the entity, you know, that by law has, is the hiring authority. So you're the people who get the, you know, get all of the say. And so, but if, so if you decide to allow other people, we would just, let's call them just non-board members 'cause that's how, you know, whether they're a board member or you're not, in, in MSBA world kind of thing. But if you decide to involve non-board members in any part of that process, it's really important just to make clear with them upfront that they're advisory in nature and that they're not gonna be, and that you don't want them to, um, think that they have the authority to make the decision, right? It, it, we have just observed so many times where boards have not been clear about that and it's created unnecessary angst for lots of the board and for the groups that thought that they're, yeah. It's, it kind of helped defeat it a little bit. Um, so we just learned to kind of hit that upfront about, just be real clear that it's advisory. It's important advisory information. Um, but at the end of the day, um, it'll be, it's up to you, the seven of you, to decide who will be hired. Um, and so, and so to, back to that, um, you know, there's, sometimes boards will have, um, of course, the board conducts an interview. They might have a, a staff interview committee. There might be a parent interview committee. There could be, um, a community interview committee. In some districts, they might just have one committee of seven people that has a representation of all those, those different groups of people. So, um, you know, there's, there's that. Uh, some boards, um, and these are all ways for people to be able to give input, if you will. Um, another, um, thing we, we hear a lot about are things like, um, Q and A sessions where a candidate will come in and, um, they'll be, uh, people in the audience will write their question down on a, on a note card. Someone will read that out loud in the meeting and then the candidate will answer it. So it's kind of one more way in which there's an opportunity for, uh, you know, staff to, people to interact with, um, candidates. So there, there are a lot of different ways. If you work with a consultant, they'll help you come up with some good ways and help you structure it so that you can retain control of that, the whole process, if you will. And, and if you decide to do the search, um, you know, on your own at that point, um, you know, you can certainly have, um, if, if someone in-house is helping coordinate, they could certainly call us and we'll help give them some ideas of how they might structure some of those meetings so that they can be, maintain that, how that might move around and that kind of thing, you know?
Does MSBA have a position or have you seen, or from your experience dealing with other school districts, as far as at what stage, I mean, to involve non-board stakeholders? I mean, first interview round or second interview round? This kind of came up a little bit in discussion that the three of us on the committee had briefly and just curious.
I think we kind of.
What input you might be able to add there?
Sure. Um, well, we, we see a lot of it both ways, actually. In some board, for some boards, they just are, you know, their thinking is, I think their thinking is that, well, you know, the first round of interviews, we're still going from six or whatever number of people down to three. You know, we'll just go ahead and do that. You know, they're all, every, I should say that everything you do, every meeting you hold related to superintendent's search, whether it's a committee or a subcommittee, full board, everything is open. So anybody who wants to observe, sit through, listen, et cetera, can.
But that, our district attorney checked that the subcommittee, because it's just advisory, is not.
Okay, so you, okay, then, you know, Ed, we would always say that you should follow the, the opinion of your legal counsel on that, on that piece.
But all the other ones, but yeah, we, we checked to clarify that.
Okay.
Because the subcommittee, because it wasn't a quorum of the board and our, our attorney checked that because it was simply advisory, we were not making decisions, that it didn't have to be an open meeting.
Right, the, like I say, good that you checked because that's, it would be real important to have that legal opinion. Yeah, I think you kind of mentioned that to me. Yeah, yeah, and that's a whole different, yeah, the open meeting law, that, that case. Because, yeah, I know what you're talking about, yeah. Uh, but anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because there was some confusion about the policy language in terms of when, but our attorney checked with recent case law in terms of that.
Another attorney might feel different than what our attorney feels, so we'll go with that.
Right, and then that's what you should because that's why you have legal counsel and, and, you know, along the way, so.
But I, I do think, as school board, our default position should always be
Open.
Open, unless there is a statutory or other reason to keep a meeting closed. But I think our default position should be
Always open.
Transparent.
Right, and fortunately, it, from your perspective, the attorney found that piece. Go ahead.
And we're gonna have a lot of meetings. We had to make sure they're all open and properly advertised. What is the, I don't remember, is it a week?
Well, we have to, um, post three days in advance for a board meeting. And we did post this meeting three days in advance, so.
You know, and really, let, you know, let's, I'm glad you asked that question 'cause let's play with that a little bit. You know, back, we were kind of playing with that hypothetical timeline. Let's say, you know, your search closes on the first and you have the meeting at which you decide who you're gonna offer interviews to on the seventh. It's a Monday night. And, but you wanna have the first round of interviews on that following Friday, Saturday. So in order for that to all work, you, you know, you'd really have to post sooner than the seven days just to make sure it's out there so everybody knows and understands that you're gonna be meeting a little sooner than.
If you have your plan, and that sounds to me like what we need to get done first, our calendar. In effect, if that's posted, to a certain extent, we have posted our meetings.
And then you just need to be, make sure that each meeting is a, another note, the notice to the.
Individual. But if you had the original plan out, it would be easier to remember post at this point.
Right, at least it's a, a four-month and a, a snapshot.
Outline.
An outline of everything to come, but for each meeting, you'd still have to.
And the posting can simply be something that's put on the district website?
No, it has to go on the principal bulletin board and, you know, it's supposed, my guess is that all of them will be special meetings and so they'll have to go follow the other, whatever other procedures are in the, um, in the open meeting law under special meetings, which I don't have that power. under special meetings, which I don't have that policy with me. I kind of wish I would have brought that, we could have looked at that, but I don't have it with me. I don't want to talk about it by memory because I, I'll get something wrong and that. But it's something like the notice has to be in certain places and it has to go to people who would have requested notice of special meetings on really any topic or all topics or just superintendent search and those kinds of things. So you have to make sure you follow all of the procedures. But your people here would know that because they would be used to posting those kinds of things.
If I could, Janet, just to get a better sense of what your thoughts are in terms of, are you saying that we, for the committee, you're thinking we should be posting or when you say default, because I'm all for transparency. I have no problem with it, I just want to be sure that we're all on the same page, you know, as a board.
For the three of you on kind of the subcommittee, all you're dealing with is procedural issues. You were talking about, should we bring an MSBA rep here today? And then you're going to be hopefully on the work-study agenda on Monday, making a recommendation to the full board. This will be a public meeting.
Right.
Should we go with an outside consultant? Should we, you know, develop an RFP, à la carte, RFP or whatever, that will be a public meeting. Once that work is over, once you've got your basic work of your subcommittee done, and I think it'll be pretty much done on Monday, then everything we do going forward is going to be open and public. Whether we have community meetings, staff meetings to get input.
Okay, so you're not necessarily advocating at this point that any meetings that the three of us have would, should, in your opinion, be posted?
No, I understand that Mick Walzberger has said those, those subcommittee meetings do not have to be.
Okay.
Janet, a question kind of directed towards you is last time that we did a superintendent search, did we use a search firm?
We did.
Did we use MSBA or did we hire?
We did not, we hired an outside firm.
Could you, and I'm, I'm not expecting to know this number off the top of your head, but could you find out from wanting to figure out so that we can get that information of what it costs?
And then add an inflationary factor?
Well, I mean, listen, I understand that it was eight years ago, but at the minimum, we should know that, you know, we should kind of know what the cost is going to be and how that's going to affect.
I'll get that and make sure everybody hears that at our work-study meeting Monday night.
Thank you.
And so, back to the community engagement piece, that'd be an important conversation to have. But the, a part of the planning meetings, the most important ones that you'd want to make sure about is do you want to have the survey and focus group forums, those kinds of things and set those dates. There's a little bit more time down the road to plan all of the other ways in which people may be involved once you get to, closer to the interviewing. And again, if you work with a consultant, they'll have lots of ideas on how that could play out in, in a district. But I also would mention, you know, the neat, you know, the really neat thing about Minnesota's open meeting law is that those are, all of the interviews are open. Anybody who wants to consider, and it's really transparent, the only thing they don't really have access to is the private data that's under the law. But, you know, they can sit and observe. The other piece is a lot of boards will make available, like at the back of the room or something, like a sheet of paper with the hiring criteria on one side of it and then on the front, there might be a couple of questions, you know, to get feedback on the different candidates. They may say, what, based on our hiring criteria, what do you believe are two candidate, strengths of this candidate? And what do you believe would be the two, but it would be growth opportunities if this person is hired. So it goes back to the hiring criteria and it's a good way to focus the, the feedback. So it can be most helpful to the board when it comes time for you to deliberate and, you know, for something to think about. That way everyone can be involved, even if they don't want to fill out a survey or go to a forum or something. All right then, so involving others, you know, the hiring criteria, once again, real important thing. You have to put good thought into that because when you start to look at the things that fall apart with the search, sometimes it's, it's not being clear about what you're looking for, you know, and you end up sort of at a disconnect, if you will. In terms of the advertising the position, the two, three most effective ways to advertise are through, on MSBA's website, the Superintendent's Association's website and EdPost. They're, it's all, they're free. You're members of MSBA, you're superintendents, a member of MASA, so they can, they'll post for free. And then EdPost is a really great way, once again, to get that word out. And because it's, because of the internet, every search that's on the internet is a national search and a, really an international search too, so. It's easy to get to Minnesota's positions through like National School Boards Association website or AASA website, so. It's, it's, it's good exposure for, for really no additional cost. The thing you want to factor in though is if you do want to advertise other places, advertising is probably a pretty big expense. You know, like.
I know that from my campaign.
Yeah, EdPost or whatever. I mean, if you go like to EdWeek or if you want to post on AASA's website, I'm not even sure what those costs would be. Most recent updated costs, but pretty high, I'm guessing. Then, so upfront, getting everything clear about what you're looking for. You know, on page five, it's actually, you know, fast forward, you know, you, once you've had the information out there, the applicant, everything has been posted, you know, the application period has passed. As I mentioned before, it's at some point in time that the, you're going to have to decide who you're going to interview. And we would, we basically would call that the screening meeting and that's what this is referring to. If you work with a consultant of some kind to help you with this piece, like I said, they would probably go through and when it went down to five or six, they believe best meet your hiring criteria and be prepared to present them to you. You know, but again, we believe at MSBA that you're the hiring authority, you should be able to see all of the, the name, at least all the names, if not all the applications, so that you have a sense of full knowledge of the whole pool, if you will. And then at that screening meeting, if you work with a consultant, you would basically be saying, do we agree with the recommend, with their recommendation based on what we know about the pool? And if not, what would you like to see different? You know, would you like to see someone added, someone removed, and someone else added, whatever the case may be? So that's part of that deliberation. The key things to keep in mind here, once again, open meeting requirement, right? Has to be an open, but also private data, go ahead.
Adding candidates, once the initial round of interviews is completed, you can't go and add someone, right?
You can't add anybody then. It's really would be during that screening meeting. If you have someone rec, coming in to, and say, you know, we reviewed the applications for you, which is part of what we're supposed to do. Here are six people, you could add a sixth, seventh person if you wanted. Or take someone away and add someone because you haven't conducted.
Interviews.
Interviews yet. Yeah, but for you to add then, it would be, I think it would cause you problems. I think that would be a bad idea. Okay, so looking on page five, just again, that is the screening of applications. You actually have a copy of policy four oh six, just, just a quick thing. This is the public and private personnel data policy. You probably have the same policy.
Those who just read this.
Right, it's, and if you would turn to page four oh six dash two, letter F. The, there's a definition of the term finalist and a finalist means an individual who is selected to be interviewed by the school board for a position. So really, you know, when you're conducting a search and when you're at this, this screening meeting, all of the data basically is, the names of the applicants are private. And, and so the data that you are dealing with is private, except. It gives a little bit of confusing piece on those statute, I think. If you look at page four oh six dash four, so we've got finalists, we've defined what a finalist is. But on letter six, letter C at the top of the page, it says the name of applicants, our private data, except when certified as eligible for appointment to a vacancy or when they become finalists, in this case, for an employment position. So at the meeting where you decide who you're going to interview, the names should become a public that, right then. I mean, they could become, that's when they become public. And we have asked this question of the legislators who passed the statute and everybody and all of them agree that that should happen. Not after you call them and ask, do you still want to be interviewed type of thing, you're supposed to come, be then. Okay, then if you turn back to page four oh six dash three, letter B, then it says here, this is the interesting piece, the following information on applicants for employment is public. Okay, the names are private, but these six pieces of information are public. Veteran status, relevant test scores, rank on eligible list, job history, education and training, and work availability. So even when you're in that meeting and job history, education and training, job history especially would be considered, in this case, public information, you still have to talk about the candidates in a way that you can identify who they are. So for you to say that in terms of job history, when you're deliberating on the candidates, you know, you should talk about them as candidate A, B, X, Y, and Z. And you wouldn't want to say candidate, you know, I really want to see candidate B in the pool, that person. I really like that that, you know, that, that the person's secondary, you know, the high school, having been the former high school principal and then named the, the actual school district building, like Roseville High School or something, for lack of a, and then went on to be a successful superintendent at a, our, our neighboring district of, and then they, without naming the candidate, you still have given away who that person is. So part of the problem is, is that you, when you're at that meeting, you have to talk about things in broad, general terms so as not to identify the names of the applicants. But once you decide who you're going to interview, the names of the applicant, that, those names become public and then you can have a list of all the different places that they've worked and, and then, and then because there's usually not veteran status information collected, there's not a relevant test score, rank on eligible list, we recommend that you not rank people because if you rank them, you create data and the data then is subject then to this public request or public information. Job history, you know, that's just pretty standard, straightforward there. Education and training, and the last piece is work availability. Most, a lot of boards don't collect that information as part of the, you know, the application process. The two big pieces that are probably a part of it are job history and education and training because you ask for, you know, where'd you go to school and what are your degrees and all that kind of stuff. And so back to this screening meeting, once again, regardless of whether you do this work yourself or with a consultant's help, it'll be kind of that candidate A, B, X, Y, and Z and talking in big, broad, in broad terms. The thing that we would also stress is that it's really, we think it's real important for boards to talk about, to really focus greatly on candidates' positive attributes and strengths rather than dwell a lot on the negatives or the downsides. Really how you talk about people is really important and we, we have anecdotal information of candidates who have withdrawn because they felt that the board or, or non-board members have treated them poorly and haven't wanted to continue in a search of withdrawn and sometimes lost, you know, like a top candidate. So really how you talk about people is really important. And it's really important to, as you move through the process, because, you know, a kind of a, a good and bad problem to have is to have two candidates that you feel equally strong about, but at the end of the day, you only need one superintendent. So how to have that conversation and make a decision to go in one direction without really, you know, with, leaving that other person still feeling really great in the event that the person you want to offer the job to says no, so that you can easily go back to the other person and offer that position and have them feel, and everyone else feel like, wow, you know, a great, great equal opportunity then for this person and for the district. It's a real, but I've seen it happen and it works out really well. It's all about how you talk about people.
You were second best, but now we'd like to hire you.
Well, but, but it's really not how you didn't say that. It's, yeah, it's not even saying that you were a second, they just, it's talking about, but with two equally strong candidates. They both have great attributes, they both, you know, did a great job with all of our hiring criteria, but we, you know, we only need one superintendent, are, where are you leaning? And then they kind of found that, you know, that conversation. But then they could easily come back in if you need to, to look at that other person that you felt really strong about and have it be a good, positive experience for everybody. So how you talk about people is important.
I've jumped up to page seven, are you prepared to discuss that?
Yeah.
The thing there is, you know, strikes me off hand as being a pretty good screening form. However, when we get into budget skills, curriculum and instruction and personnel management, those strike me as largely subjective assessments. So are there guidelines for how we could quantify those sorts of segments?
You know, I'm glad you brought this up because when you're, when you're reviewing, you know, the screening, when you're reviewing the applications, at some point, you probably would use a, a form of some kind where you'd have each applicant by letter, you know, their, their alpha identifier. And then across the top should be your hiring criteria. These are just for.
Sample.
Sample, yeah. And so, and then I, I think then at the end of the day, then you're making a determination individually whether you believe that there's evidence in the, in the, in the paperwork provided. It's whether or not the candidate has provided some documentation of some kind of having met or, or having done these different things in their district. And that's really what that's about. But I think that's one of the things you'd have a conversation about.
That's okay.
When you're developing that, what it means. Why, why, what is that one, why is the curriculum piece important to us and what might you be looking for in the materials? Because you should be looking for really evidence of some kind provided from a reference or some, someone. If, if not written like in a personal statement or something about a belief or philosophy or something he or she would have done, it part of a, a work assignment someplace. And you're looking for words and phrases provided by folks who write references on their behalf.
Beyond references, are candidate performance reviews open to us?
Well, I don't, I don't think, you know, I, I think.
You can't dig that deeply?
I don't know if you, I, you'd, I think there'd have to be releases of information that gets into the other district. So the candidate would have to figure out a way, you know, would have to release, be able to sign a release. Yeah, you know, so, you know, I don't know about if you'd want to go there or not, but I know, I know that, what I can say is that there have been instances where a candidate will include that type of information in, voluntarily in their materials.
Okay.
You know, just because they have it or whatever. But it, in that case, it wasn't a requirement or anything in, in, of the board type of deal. So you should have a form, some way of assessing your hiring criteria because it's really all about the hiring criteria. One of the first things you do is, is develop the criteria and then you work your way, and use that at every step of the process to keep yourself grounded. So once you've decided who you're going to interview, then the, the next piece of the process, if you work with a consultant, they'll help schedule everything. If you do, you know, decide to go with staff help, then someone on staff, most likely your HR person, it sounds like, but might be the person who would help with all of the arranging of the, the interviews. But another thing with the interviews, you know, real important, it's very important that the interviews be standardized, that you, you know, you have the same amount of time for everybody, the same questions, asked by the same question asker in this, in the same sequence and of all candidates. And it's because that's really the only way you can have a, real apples-to-apples comparison of how they respond to your questions. The other thing I were often asked, well, what if, what if we would like to ask a follow-up question? Can we do that? And our, our recommendation is you should not be asking follow-up questions. You can clarify that you understood what was just said. But additional question asking or digging deeper on something, it can, kind of upsets the whole apples-to-apples comparison piece and can actually cause a person to spend way too much time answering one question that they don't have an opportunity then to fairly answer all of the other questions. So stick with the script. Actually, if there's ever a question like that, that you wish you could ask follow-up, if that person is asked back for a second round of interviews, that might be a really great additional second round interview question.
Speaking of which, are all interviewees held to the same time limit for the interview?
Should be.
Should be.
You know, like if you had, if you say you're going to have an hour and a half interview, you know, it might look like the first, they come into the room, introductions, that probably takes a couple, two, three minutes. Then they sit down and you get right into the question asking. It shouldn't be off talking about chit-chat because chit-chat causes problems with the protected categories or has the potential to create a problem. Now, you know somebody's religion and how many children they've got and you're high-fiving yourself, high-fiving, go, hey, we could have five more kids coming in. You know, all kinds of things happen. kinds of things happen. Um, so, but yeah, keep it all, um, standardized, and, uh, yeah, but after you get through that, uh, that, about first two, three minutes of just introductions, then if you think about it, if you have, um, an hour and a half interviews, uh, then let's fast forward to the backend. You, it should allow probably at least ten minutes for the candidate to ask you questions, so now you're up to thirteen minutes have passed. Uh, there'll probably be another, uh, two minutes of wrap-up. On the, our candidate's way, I'll thank you for coming, um, you just, you know, we just want you to know that we are intro- interviewing X number of people, our final sec- uh, first round interviews will take place on such-and-so, and if you're one of the lucky, uh, to be asked back for a second, uh, interview, you should hear from us on so-and-so. Um, that kind of thing, yep.
I don't know if we're going to get to this, and there might, probably, you know, there's a specific answer, but, you know, I work for the state, and we have very, pretty rigid processes when it comes to interview forms and ratings, and, uh, the forms that we use are saved, and the potentially, maybe, public data, or at least, uh, it could be pulled for some sort of lawsuit. So, you know, the ratings, uh, need to match what the decisions were. And so, what, what typically, or what's recommended for how we rate the first round of, you know, candidates, and then decide who the next ones are? You know, it's like, like, it's almost like a, a, a basketball game, right? In the state, you add up your points, and whoever wins, but I don't know that that's necessarily the way it would be for this.
Yeah, you know, um, there is, I, it's probably a little bit of a mixture of both things. There's that mixture of, um, you know, at the end, you might add up, you know, the points just to get a sense of how, how many meets a person, each person had versus how many doesn't meet or don't knows. That can be one, one data point. But another one would be, um, gathering the, any feedback, observations that people in the audience may have, as they observe the answering of the questions. I mean, going back to, here, here are two strikes that I think I heard, based on, um, the, the answers to the questions, and here are two areas, if we hire this person, here are two opportunities for growth, is a better way than talking about, here are the negatives. Um, and, you know, so that information would be in the mix, but then it would also be, here's what we as board members heard are the, the positive things within there, and then from there, it's kind of a compilation of all of that kind of coming together, to make that determination.
Somehow we have to reach consensus.
As you reach the consensus. And that's really what it's all about, and then where are you leaning, those kinds of things. But the, the data, I think, um, is the piece that, is that, that more black and white based on the, the meets and doesn't meet? You know, some, it goes back to that, but the, um, the, you know, the, the supporting comments about strengths, um, uh, and from your own observations can help to support the data, or, or, or it may also, has the possibility of helping you, you may decide to go in a different direction, though, too. I mean, that has probably happened.
I guess, yeah, and, and, I know you can, and just-
Mm-hmm.
In the end, the board decides, and-
Yes.
And it's going to be us that choose who the finalists are from the original first interviews. And, um, you know, potentially, I could have, if we use this form, for example, I, I could have a lot of doesn't meet requirements, I could listen to the audience, and, uh, but I might just like this person. And I'm gonna, you know, I mean, if, to what degree can there be any sort of accountability in, in that manner, or suggested accountability?
You know, I don't know if I have a, a really good answer for that, other than, I know that how people, that, how, how, the, you know, one of the reasons why boards, it's a, it, it seems like a best practice is for all board members to take a turn at asking questions, is it gives you that opportunity to see, could there be that connection at that personal level, too? And I think that's a little bit of where you're going with that. You know, how are they connecting, and what do I, how do I observe? Because that's an important part of what the job is, too, and you can, that's one of those observable things. But, um, I don't think I have a really good answer to your question, probably. You know, I, I think it's a really good one, I want to think about it a little bit, um, more specifically, but I think it's, it's more, you know, the, the, the forms and everything is a real important part of that, and how people answer the questions, and how you hear it, but there's also that, how they interact, and what you observe as they're interacting with other people, that becomes an important part of at least some of that decision.
So your question though is, to what, to what weight do we give the intangibles? Sounds like you're talking about intangibles.
Kind of. Yep.
Then you probably want to talk about that, as a board, because a lot of boards, um, you know, it probably goes back a lot to your hiring criteria, and how do you ra- rank your criteria? Because when I'm thinking about it, you know, oftentimes, what, it seems many times there are boards, in, it, in many cases, when I look at hiring criteria of boards, like even across the country, that develop for their superintendent positions, one of the first criteria will be, the person's open and honest, and how they interact with other people. You know, whether it's the board, staff, students, well, one way you begin to gauge that is, what kind of reaction do you have with me when I'm, when you're answering my question, and how do I see you interacting with others? That tells you something about that, maybe. Um, and so, some of it has to do with what you're looking for in the candidate.
Yeah, and I don't, I-
But not, it shouldn't go all that way, because you could go off, that's where that over-charismatic might come-
We'd go through all of this process for months of deciding on our criteria, and what we're looking for, and then, in the end, you know, I could just go, uh, rogue, right? And then-
Yeah.
Bring a couple of people with me.
Because you really like someone.
We think they have a nice tie, that they're, they're internal or external, or from heart crap, I mean, you know, and we have a gut feeling, and I, you know, I guess, uh, I guess that just hap- could happen, but I'd like to think it wouldn't.
Yeah, you know, I suppose the possibility exists, but, you know, if, if you just keep going back to the hiring criteria, that's really what it's all about. That's why you have to spend so much time thinking about it, and if you use that every step of the process, it, it helps to keep you grounded. But, you know, I just think, too, if you trust your board members to follow a process, and not just like their tie, because I don't think I've ever, interview committees I've been on for hiring principals and stuff, I've never hired someone because of what their tie was like.
No, that was a joke.
I've always, you know, I know, I know, but-
But I mean, but something other than the criteria.
Like, guys from the range are really honest and hardworking, and boy, I like that candidate from the range, that type of thing, or?
I think-
Or just criteria other than what we sort of decide.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, we need to have a discussion, because if we work on, on hiring criteria, I would suspect, that's what we're going to look at to hire the person, and certainly have an honest conversation, where if someone felt someone was going rogue, we'd have an honest conversation about that.
And a public meeting.
And we'd assume that, you know, if someone is saying, I, I would support this person, I would expect that trusting my fellow board members, they would have a logical reasoning why they support that person.
Right.
Yeah, so, and that, that's what, you know, but in terms of, I know, with talking to members from other boards, that the plus, the process blew up in their face, and they had board members in tears, and things like that, that we need to have a, a discussion about how, you know, is this going to be a unanimous decision? Are we going to move a motion and vote on it? How, before we get to that process and go, hey, wait a minute, we, we kind of haven't figured that piece out, so.
That's kind of where it's going, is, is to have, then be, you know, to, to ahead of, before we get to a potential like that, that we say we're really going to stick to our criteria that the community and we came up with, or to, at least to a strong fear, or have, just have that con- those kind of conversations prior.
You know, the other part of it, if you go back to the do's and don'ts, you know, one of the do's is agree, um, to reach, arrive at a consensus. But the other thing that we often like to say is that, you know, it's real important to have an open mind all through the process, and, you know, don't let yourself fall in love with that first person who comes in the door, that just blows your socks off, because, you know, and then get, because that's sometimes is where some of that, you know, angst can come in down, down the road. You know, in fact, we've even seen, um, sit, there are, there are plenty of situations out there where, you know, someone who just shines at that first round of interviews, in fact, where, you know, a board will call and say, wow, we just had this fabulous interview, and, uh, you know, we're just ready to, we're, we're just, you know, trying to think, we're kind of thinking about scrapping the rest of the process, and just offering that, the job to that, that person. And, you know, the very next thing out of my mouth is, no, don't do that, work the process through to its completion, because it's not uncommon for that to flip in the second round of interviews, and it was exactly what happened. So, don't fall in love with someone, it's okay to have a like with someone, but be open to courting lots of people right up until you've had this whole conversation about what's all, what's, what's all possible, and how you see people in different situations and interacting with, because that's part of it, you know, when you are watching them interact, that's a piece of it, and when you, if you are at, watching them interact with community members, if that's part of what your process is, that's another important component, that fits with the hiring criteria. It's a more phys- it's a more, it's a demonstrable piece, it's different from how they answer a question. So, I think we kind of worked around the finding, an answer to your, your question, it's a really good one.
Yeah, I wish you had been around when I was eighteen.
Yeah. When you were, when you were eighteen, is that what you-
Okay.
Yeah, let's hear it, George.
Well, I don't mean that much courting.
First person walked through the door.
Just pull out your checklist, George.
To those criteria.
Have you noted any benefit in boards, to boards, uh, in rotating the order of, um, candidates in a successive interview? So in other words, so the number one person is al- isn't always going first, and so forth? Is there a benefit to that?
You mean like the, um, like me asking always question number one? Or are you talking-
No, I meant, if Ellen is candidate one, she comes in first, she's interviewed first, Janet's two, George's three, at the next round, George, excuse me, George is one.
Oh, you know, like at the second round of interviews?
Yeah.
The chances are good that they're not going to follow in that order anyway, because schedules are different, and-
Oh, that's true.
When people can come in, and, you know, if someone's coming in from a greater distance, you might line them up first, and then build out all the rest of the schedule around that person, if possible. So, I, if, if it works out, someone's always first, it might just be the luck of the draw, or, you know, or, or, you know, sometimes people will consciously make sure that they mix them up, just to throw things off, but, yeah, good questions, yeah.
Janet, I'm waiting for you to say, Scott, I've noticed that you only cough when you finish speaking, so shut up.
You know, I'm concerned about your health.
No, I, I am fine, except for this dry cough, I mean, just don't, I'll find out-
Well, it's winter, the heat's kicked on, so, dry air.
We'll find out tomorrow how fine you are, so.
Question about, you know, the questions. Is it common practice, because I've been on interview committees where it has happened, it hasn't, is it common practice to give them the questions beforehand?
You mean like, at the meeting? Or like, the day before?
Yeah, is that, or are they, is that common practice? Because I've been on interview committees where the questions have been given to them, like, a few days before, and others where they're just, and I was just wondering how.
You know, um, I, I'm not really, I'm not familiar with them being given to super candidate, candidates.
Okay.
That early. Um, if they might be given, you know, they might have advanced no- knowledge of the number, you know, and how much time.
Okay.
You know, that, like, it's an hour.
They have to know the, uh, the limit.
You know, and they're fifteen, yeah, so that they can gauge themselves a little bit, and then they might, um, and, because that's an important part of, uh, for some boards, that's an important part of the, the schtick, if you will, is, um, uh, how, you know, do we give them, do we let them see that, the question, so that they can gauge themselves, and sometimes it's helpful, they can look down and, and say, oh, okay, I, I understand what you're asking. Um, or, do they want them to just to really answer the questions cold? Uh, so, and, and how do they really act under pressure in that way? So, um, like, we've kind of seen it both ways, but I've not ever, for myself, seen them be given to a superintendent candidate-
Okay.
You know, four days in advance, so they could prepare everything.
Yeah, I wasn't sure. I was just curious.
Yeah.
Because I've seen both.
Mm-hmm.
The League of Women Voters. Remember that?
Interview.
They couldn't, because they were audience questions.
Yeah.
That, too.
Because I listened to this, to my, to my mind, it sounds a lot like when you're doing, if you're doing a PhD, you do your final defense, you know it's two hours, you know, they can ask you anything under the sun, and you just prepare and prepare to answer anything. And by that point, any one of these candidates should be able to answer a question, whether it's about curriculum, or technology, or labor relations, because that's the skills they need to do the job. And, and that's kind of how I feel about it, because I remember having a cohort and practicing for months, as we thought up devilish questions to ask each other, cold, once a week for a couple hours. And these people have been living the life, so to speak, so should be prepared. So I, I don't, I think any fair question, just like when you're a teacher interviewing for a job, and they'll ask you, how would you handle this?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the first round of questions tends to be probably more just, that overview screening, you know, getting a good sense of, you know, basic philosophy, et cetera, but the second set of questions that you come up with probably are a lot more con- about context, you know, and, uh, you know, this happened, then what? Or how would you handle this situation? Or what has been your experience, this, what about you do differently next time? Those kinds of things, so, yeah. I think, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just, so, I apologize, I'm, I gotta go. Um, is there, is your name numbers on the website? If I have any additional questions, I can email you?
Yes.
It is.
I apologize for leaving early.
But all right, John, we'll see you again Monday evening.
All right, have a good weekend, have a good turkey day.
Thanks, very much.
You as well, Dan.
You know, um, one other thing I just wanted to mention on the interviews, is that, with that first round of interviews, we talked about the front end and the backend, and we, you know, you, pretty soon, you, you use up maybe fifteen to twenty minutes, but there's really, on an hour and a half interview, there'd be over an hour's worth of questions, you know, for, for them to ask you, I mean, for you to ask them. Yeah, I mean, you, you figure an hour, about an hour of you asking questions, and then they should have fifty, about ten, fifteen minutes, and the rest is, they're getting started and wrapping things up. So at the end of the day, you probably have a good eighteen questions, or nineteen really good questions, going back to your hiring criteria, and back to the comment that was made, yeah, you know, that, you know, a candidate would probably want to see those hiring criteria, and, because they, you know, I think they, a lot of times, they figure that's how, what's important, and, but also, you should expect that they would have done some research on the district, you know, checked out your website, to, you know, look at some of your test data, those kinds of things. Um, so the, um, on pages nine through twelve, there are a lot of, nine through eleven, I guess, a lot of sample potential interview questions, uh, just as a starting point, just for your conversation, but if you work with a consultant, they'll have a whole bank, they'll help you, they'll, they'll come to a, um, an interview training-type meeting, and with, uh, a slate of possible questions that you would then review, and maybe winnow it down from twenty-five to whatever number. Um, but, um, but these are some as a starting point, uh, to get you thinking. Again, on page twelve, the don't ask questions, and of course, um, not listed here is, um, the residency, you know, in Minnesota, you can't require residency for a teacher, superintendents are considered teachers for that same statute.
What is-
In the district.
Right.
Right, right, yeah, in, in district residence, yeah. Can't require them to move to the district, you're right.
What is considered genetic information?
I, I think that would be blood tests, and probably-
Oh, blood test results.
Results, and that kind of thing, yeah. That's a great question, that's what the, the starting point of my figuring that.
Veteran status, do we offer veterans preference?
Doesn't apply to superintendents.
It doesn't? Okay.
That's it. Um, okay, so then we've got the don't ask questions, you know, after the final first round of interviews, oh, then, on page thirteen, there's some candidates turn, remember, that you're looking for that good fit both ways, some possible questions. You know, sometimes I'm asked, well, about, well, how should we handle, you know, what I, you know, what's a good way to handle the ask, you know, us answering questions that we're asked? And I think the answer to that question is, it's really what makes sense to your board, and what would give the best indication of the culture of how you operate. You know, because we, because in some boards, it's, they would say, well, you know, we have, we have committee structure, so if, hey, well, if it's, if it's a question about a building, and, if it's a buildings and grounds-related question, you know, the Buildings and Grounds Committee Chair might take that on first. Um, or if it's a finance- Um, or if it's a finance related question, the, the finance, the Chair of the Finance Committee might take that on. Uh, in some, in some, uh, they'll just say, you're the Chair, you're our appointed spokesperson, you take every question first and then we'll chime in. And others will say, let's just kind of see what the questions are and it just kind of happens more organically. And I've kind of seen it happen in that way and it really looks, works out really kind of well. You know, and it's really about the, you know, the question that's asked. And in most cases, the candidate will ask a question and they really want to hear from all six or seven board members. Um, you know, like, what do you think is the, um, uh, what are you looking for in, in a superintendent? I'll ask each person. Or what is the most important thing, if, if I'm selected, what's the most important thing you'd like to see these work on in the first one hundred days or whatever? You know, and see if there's consensus. It's kind of a nice way to, to do things, actually.
Sandy, I think you may have already mentioned this, uh, and I didn't catch it, but in, in terms of the interviews, would you suggest setting aside time, uh, for, uh, the candidates to ask these questions? And if so, what? I think you touched on this already, but I didn't catch it.
Well, um, you know, first, the board should ask all the questions that they want. They're allotted amount of time, whether it's forty-five minutes or whatever. And then, but you should allow probably about ten minutes or so.
About ten minutes, roughly.
Yeah, roughly ten minutes. And if, if you have an hour and a half interview, you know, you could have a little bit more in there. But, um, the thing that I have noticed that is, if you have an hour and a half interview, uh, it's, it would not be uncommon for everything to be done sometimes in forty-five minutes. And, and have it be very effective, um, interviewing and answers. Uh, and it may also be that it could go right up to the time and, and still be just as effective in how the, and, and the, the, the answers are delivered, et cetera. So it's really kind of an interesting thing to observe, um, along the way. On page fourteen, you've got some common interview mistakes. You know, I think one of the big things, if you, uh, item number one, if you interview six people, uh, and you do it over two days, you know, it's important to jot down some notes, you know, on your personal sheet of paper, just so that you can go back and remind yourself of who you're talking, who you're, were thinking about, or what was going through your mind, uh, as they answered some of the questions, whether it's about curriculum or ever, or whatever. Um, you know, the quick decisions piece, take your time, um, you know, talk it through. Remember, once again, don't lock yourselves in or fall in love right away with someone. Be open to be swayed, basically, because it's really seven of you having come together to find that right person. And if you're open, I think it can go a long way towards hopefully avoiding some of the, the real angst that sometimes can happen, as you've mentioned before. Uh, yet, even for your self-keeping, um, focus on the, the whole big picture. Um, you know, looking at everything, not just one, like, well, the, you know, that's a, I think, especially like if, if it's finance or something, might be a good example. Maybe not so strong in finance because the person's not done the job before, but all the other things the person has done shows a very strong candidate in a lot of other ways. So I think the moral there is that there's no one person who's going to be a hundred percent in all areas equally, you know, when you hire them. There's always going to be areas for growth.
When we, as a board, make our selection, would you hold to simple majority of the vote? Or would you recommend something more robust as a majority winner?
Well, hopefully, uh, the answer to the question is hopefully you'll all be able to talk it out.
Hopefully it would be seven all, yeah.
You get to that consensus. But you know, if you get down to, you know, I'm not sure that I would say, if you get to four-three, then, you know, there's something there. Because, because once again, you know, if you go back to the do's and don'ts, um, you know, don't hire the best of the worst. Is that my, is that a signal about where it might be? Um, it certainly is, uh, would mean that there's not agreement. Um, and the message to a potential candidate coming in on a four-three vote would be kind of, might, could be a tough one. You know, there's, I mean, a five-two would be better, or six-one than four-three, that's like barely over, you know? But it's still a majority vote. And, um, I wouldn't say that a, a person coming in would be doomed, because I, I, there are also people out there who are so sure and confident about who they are, their skills, abilities, and how they can interact with people, that they will make it their mission to turn everybody's opinion around, who may have been the dissenters, and, and will do great. So I think it, it's really hard to come up with a, a flat answer on that. It's really one of those things that you just kind of, kind of have to feel out at the time, I guess. But I think you're going to come, you're going to have more than a four-three vote on something.
I would hope.
I think you will. Go ahead.
I'm just getting, as we're talking about, say, you've done your due diligence, you've had great lists, you've had great interviews, and now you've come down to this final discussion and everything's an open meeting.
Yeah.
So even your final discussion on the pros and cons, and their names are out there at this point.
Yep, yep, they have been.
You know, so you just be as positive as you can, because maybe number one will say, I guess not. And then number two, who didn't get, who was the one vote maybe, and the other one got five, is the one you're going to offer it to. So I'm thinking of what you said. And so no matter how you phrase it, it, it's out there, they're all going to be hopefully awesome candidates. But you still have to vote for something. Maybe we just like the fact that they all water ski well or something, but.
You know, and, but, you know, I, I think it's real important to, you know, have that conversation, be as positive you can without shutting doors. But you know, it, but it's also could be, and I think this is something that was brought up early on, that if there's not that sense that that person next in line is the one, then it's okay to reopen the search. You know, it's, you shouldn't, you shouldn't feel that, because you know, don't hire the best of the worst, you know, just because, you know, but, uh, the chances are good if the person was equally strong, you know, and, you know, you're going to, you could reach that, you could see it moving forward. But if there's a lot, there was a lot of distance between those two people, then, you know, it, you'd have a conversation more about the, the now what. Um, you know, if somebody turns you down, then you have to come back to the table and, and you have to have another conversation. Okay, now, now, now what? Can we offer to the, you know, what about our next person? And that's when you have to have the discussion about, is it a yes or no? That we're going to send the offer then to that person? And if you, and if you, the decision is no, then, you know, it's, it's okay to shut that search down and, you know, get that interim, um, or reopen it, whatever the case may be.
On that point, if we have a clear consensus as to who we think the best candidate is, and he, she, or it tells us no, should we pursue or just continue the search for the remaining, through the remaining candidates?
Well, I think what, um, a lot of boards would do is take another look at the, at, well, then, you know, they'd have to get back together and say, okay, this happened, um, so now what? And then the board would then probably say, well, let's take another, let's take a look at our candidates again, the ones that we have interviewed. Is there someone else there that we'd like to? Or, or send it off or to? Uh, or was there anybody in the, you know, or was there anybody, take a look at the pool again would be another option. Um, and if you felt that there was not another person that you wanted to make the offer to, then of course, you know, you would be able, you know, or could just move on to, um, either looking for an interim, which would be another search, basically.
Yeah.
Or, or reopen it, and then, which is basically another search too. You know, clarify the hiring criteria, take a better look at the salary, you know, whatever you think that, you know, the concern may have been with attracting people to the pool. Um, let's see, uh, on page, um, I, I think you already saw, oh, um, actually on page fifteen is just a sample interview summary form, you know. But, but then, you know, your form might look, will reflect whatever your interview questions are, and if you work with a consultant, they'll have some ideas of what that might look like. Um, on page sixteen, you know, we've said, said before that we think it's real important to check references, uh, and that you identify one board member to do that. Um, and to do that, oh, I should really point out a couple of things in the appendices. I've kind of forgotten about the appendices tonight. Um, actually, the appendices begin on page,
Twenty-six?
Twenty-six, yeah. On page twenty-six, we have, um, this is just a sample vacancy announcement. You know, there should have some flyer of some kind to mark up the position. Um, but part of that, um, marketing should also include, um, uh, you know, a little bit of background on the district, what your qualifications are. And again, some statement about salary. This one just has regionally competitive compensation, which really doesn't say much, but, um, at least says something on page twenty-six. Um, we went with that, Ralph, with these. Um, page twenty-seven gives another option of, of a starting point for, um, information that you might put out about your district. But it was really at page twenty-eight, the application form is what I wanted to really point out to you. Um, it's real important, um, to have a form like this, and I know if you use the AppleTrack system or, you know, I mean, like MSBA, when we conduct searches, we have a form. I think all consulting firms have a form of some kind. Uh, what's nice about that is it's the one time in which all of the information sort of gathered in a similar form, it makes it easier for you to find what you're looking for. Res, all resumes, it's, the information's there, but people sign different resumes and sometimes it's harder to find what you're looking for. If you have a, a common form, like an application form, it's just, eventually you're just kind of like, okay, now I know where to go to find this information. Um, but the important thing that I wanted to mention to you is actually item number two. What, one of the things you'll have to decide is what information are you going to require your applicant submit to you for a completed application? You know, um, uh, it's not uncommon for there to be a, a cover page, a cover letter of some kind indicating your interest in the position. Uh, there should be an up-to-date resume, um, probably at least three, uh, current letters of recommendation, like within the last year or two at the latest. Um, that, yeah, a copy of the license, um, transcript, uh, transcripts, I should say. And then a, a form like this, you know, next thing you, that's, that's a lot of data for you to use to help make your decision.
If we're going to ask for a transcript, does that not violate the age question?
That's a really good question. You know, there are going to be all kinds of references in, in your materials that are going to point to protected categories or classes. Um, and you're right, in a, um, on a transcript, you'll, if you look hard enough, you could probably figure out the age that person is now, because you could do the math. Um, you know, what you have to do is ignore that. And just move on.
You don't, would you, would you necessarily ask for all of their transcripts or just their graduate?
You could ask for their graduate transcript. Yeah. That, you know, usually I think what happens is that, you know, when we ask for them, they send us all of their stuff. Then they send us a copy of the unofficial one and we just, we just would say, um, that the official one needs to be provided to, you know, the employing entity. But it, the, there's a lot of, still a lot of valuable information in there. We just say to, to board members, you know, you're going to find all kinds of these kinds of things in an application, just don't circle them on the forms, don't write them down, someplace, don't say anything out loud. It's just go put it in that compartment back there and forget it's there. And that's really what you have to do, because really, on the resume, there will be, I'm, I'll, I'll bet you there's going to be information that I, I'm married, I have five children. I go to this church, I'm president of these things, you know, so next thing you've got like one, two people, ten protected categories already listed that you haven't, and, you know, that you can't really comment on. So you just have to let it hang there and move on to other stuff. Um, and so, you, once again, but the other thing I would mention on this, on page twenty-nine, you know, there, there's this, you know, most of them will have a space for your references. What's the thing about the references provided by the applicant? Yeah, and they're going to be, and they're going to say what?
Blowing things.
Exactly. So, we think it's really important that you have a, a recent le, release of information that allows you to ask, or allows you to check references of other people not already listed. You know, other people in, uh, either current or places of past, um, employment that would have knowledge of the work history in that district. Um, this one doesn't really get to that, but, um, we have the one that we, like, for instance, I think we've looked at some of them on the different websites and they're, they're really, they're pretty intensive in terms of, uh, all of the different permissions that are, are given. So, um, you want to make sure that you have something that allows you to check, uh, references not listed.
Sandy, just, uh, quick question, curious on twenty-eight, um, toward the bottom, do you hold a Minnesota issued superintendent license? What is FF number?
Oh, that's the file number.
File folder.
File folder number, yeah, that's good, yeah.
That's education ease, yeah.
Yeah.
Are there circumstances under which you might want to offer a position to someone who is near obtaining a superintendent's license but has not yet obtained it?
Yeah, you know, there have been time instances when that has happened. Um, the concern is, what if they don't complete it?
Well, it's conditional.
Would have to be a contingent to offer.
Uh, upon completion of the licensure.
Well, and, but they still have to have a provisional of some kind approved by the, the Department, you know, of Education, et cetera. You know, it, it's a risk. And, and, and a lot of the times it's an unnecessary risk type of thing. Just in case something happens or whatever.
Do you have any examples of, um, you know, the committee, the board, you know, interviewing and, and, and varying a little bit from the traditional interview?
Sing your school song.
Well, yeah, I mean, not that, I mean, um, for example, the white, the real White Bear song. The original White Bear song. There's some white history here.
Yeah.
The White Bear Lake.
Pan Mariner, oops. We used to have two separate high schools here.
In my work, when we hire teachers, we, we have them actually teach a lesson.
Sure.
Because it seems logical to not have a teacher just to answer questions. But, so for, for them to, for example, present, come with a ten-minute presentation on some education initiative that you're proud and, and actually present it, you know, as opposed to just reacting to questions. Have you ever heard of that?
Yeah, I've heard of that. Um, you know, I, I've heard of, um, where, um, you know, if, if, in, let's say, in a, for example, a district, um, knows that they're going to, you know, they have a, a referendum looming. Yeah, and so in, in that particular district, they just ask the person to come prepared with, um, a brochure of how they would advertise, you know, how they would get the information out to the community. And then the next piece might be, how would you talk with a community group about it? Because, you know, there are those kinds of, I mean, I have heard, I mean, that's one example. So, I mean, it is something that has, we have heard of that, you know, but you really want to put good thought into it.
You could pick the best one and tell her.
And it's.
Sign the copy right over to us.
Yeah, but, um, you know, that, you'd have to put good thought into it and, you know, structure it in such a way that it, you know, and, and there have been times, uh, that I, I'm trying to, I don't, I'm, I want to think this out of the second here, but I think there, uh, there was a board that, um, decided that it would be, they, they asked each candidate at the end of, after they completed their interview, uh, they, they gave them a space for them to then create something. You know, like, you'd have like, you know, thirty minutes or something to create this. And I, I don't know, must have been a brochure or some, a news release probably is what it was. Something's happened and, and you have to, uh, write a news release for the local newspaper. That would be something that would make sense to do that. But yeah, it is, it is something that, uh, we hear about. Um, you know, it's probably not super common, because I don't hear about it in every district, but I know that it, that district, that some boards do that. And it's, you know, and it's just part of what the process is. It's one more way of assessing, you know, what, what, you know, what hiring criteria does it relate back to and how, you know?
George can be quirky.
Yeah, but, you know, it's, but I, it, but it's something that comes up, um, you know, yeah.
But, in a, you know, you're usually, if you're applying for the job, you know, you have the qualifications, you, you're prepared for the interview, but in some people who are very thoughtful and take some time in terms of press releases, it might be an awful lot of pressure on the spot. I mean, it, it would help you sort through people, but sometimes what I've found in interviews, particularly when you have a teacher teach a lesson, you get the people that are good showmanship, but sometimes those people that are really good teachers, but a little bit more nervous. but a little bit more nervous in a situation like that, you miss out on some, there's some employees in the district that are exemplary, that if in their interview they had to teach a lesson, they probably wouldn't be here.
On the other hand, you might get a person who's great at teaching a lesson, but they're horrible sitting around answering questions that are.
Well, yeah, you've got both of those, but sometimes, I, my thing was, you know, I feel for, for a lot of people, and just a, particularly a public interview is, is, can be a little stressful situation. And adding more on the spot. I, I think the idea of, you know, bring a brochure to us that you prepared or something to support that. But I don't, I, I would just want to, this is just my personal opinion, but I think putting, to me, it's putting, it's putting more pressure on a person.
Perhaps we could get to a lot of what George suggested in a site visit. You know, we could ask people, you know, have you observed this person interacting with the media in crisis situations or whatnot, tell us which one.
Yeah, but we're still secondhand.
It is secondhand, but.
I mean, we're, the, 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 the superintendent, if they can't handle a bunch of people looking at him talking, then I don't know that I want that.
Well, I don't, but I don't, but in terms of, because here, who prepares our press releases?
Oh, no, I'm not talking about, that's why I'm saying, to me, it'd be something we told them about and they prepared.
Yeah, to bring it with us, yeah.
Present rather than sit and react to questions. Just, and not that that's going to be real even, but it's just, it's a different look. They're, they're standing up and they're sitting in a wheelchair and they're giving us information. And it's maybe, and it's something, you know, for example, that they have done and they're teaching us about it and they're presenting, but they've had.
Yeah, I agree with you on that point, but with the other suggestion that some people give, in terms of a thirty-minute, go over there for thirty minutes and come up with something now, I, I think we're putting a lot.
Yeah, and it's not necessarily something that I'm suggesting, it's just something that has happened, is an example type of thing, yeah.
I can think of learning styles and presentation styles that everybody prepares different ways. And, again, you might eliminate someone who would do an awesome job by simply only looking at the person that can slap it together quick. It can be done well, but you're eliminating a whole other bunch of people who are methodical, well-prepared, awesome at other things.
Well, the other, the other thing too is interviewing for a job is totally separate than doing the job. I mean, you could get somebody that, you know, because they're right, you know, they're, they're, what they're going to take home, you know, so to speak, their, their living is at stake, you know, tremble at, at the thought of doing something like that. But the, if they had to do that very thing as part of their job, knowing that they had, you know, the job, they could act in a whole different manner. I mean, I can see people acting even differently because of the fact that it's an interview versus not, you know, rather than part of their job.
Well, if we go down this path and have a do option along with the say option, I like what Sandy suggests, especially given our timing. Maybe we could ask the candidates, you know, we know we're going to have a renewal on our operating levy on the ballot next November. The new superintendent's going to be on the job four months before that election. We can tell them a couple of days ahead of time, come prepared with what you would say during a community meeting about the importance of renewing the levy or, or the factors that they should consider when they go to the voting booth. That might be, that might.
Yeah, that piqued my interest when she mentioned that, because we're in that situation.
And this one that I heard of, that's how they coached it too, they, they gave the person plenty of advance notice. And so they knew what was coming and then they kind of use that somehow too. But, it's really how you structure it and, and taking it back to, you know, why do you want to know? And what do you want to learn from it? And then how does it pertain back, relate back to one of your hiring criteria? Yeah, I want to make sure it's grounded in that, not just something you're doing just for, you know, to do it.
I really don't anticipate this unfolding, I hope. But I pride myself on being circumspect. Is there a list of automatic disqualifiers for someone applying for a superintendency? And maybe more, may a former convicted felon apply?
Well, you know, not being able to be licensed would be one.
That, so they couldn't hold the license if they out? Okay. So it's indirect.
Right, and it, you know, and then a condition of employment is that, you know, they have to pass the criminal background check, you know, that BECA, you know, the crim, or whatever you set as that standard in your policy for the criminal background check.
So, someone who has served their debt to society, forget it, right?
Well, unless they've been pardoned.
It requires a pardon.
A pardon, or you can, you can move from expungement, so, and then it's as if you've never been convicted. Do you have somebody in mind?
Yeah.
He's still on.
George, don't look at me. Nah, he's principal in a prison school.
Okay then. That's funny. Okay, well, I suppose we should circle back around here too.
Yes.
But, you know, you should have a form of some kind, decide what data you're going to want from your applicants. Uh, there are, there are a few other things at the, in the appendices, just to kind of point them out. You know, I did mention that, you know, one of the things, reasons why you have to have, should assign, if you do the search yourself, you should assign a staff person to track everything. You know, there's, on page thirty, there's, you know, a letter that, that receives the full application. You know, on thirty-one, you've got a no interview letter, you've got a confirmation letter. You know, there's a lot of, you know, just communicating with the candidates on your, on your behalf, making sure everything's lined up, those kinds of things. So we've got the reference checks, lots of, we've got, I think this was mentioned already. We've got some sample questions on pages sixteen and seventeen, and even a possible reference check form. You know, so it is nice to have something like this if you check references. Let's say you've got three, you bring three people back for the second round of interviews and you decide you want to check at, at least three references for each of the, the people. That's nine. It, it, it's really good to have some way to organize it for yourself, whoever's going to do the collecting of that information.
I just seem to be stuck in the dark mode right now. Let's say perchance someone slides in a phony record and then we only discover it after we've hired them.
Fraud and the inducement. We sue their ass and they lose the job. Next question.
Yeah, you know, but you know, you have some really good questions.
Every now and then.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll just hope that your, your good due diligence will, you know, help, you know, prevent that from happening. You got your reference check forms, and then on page nineteen, you've got making the choice. That's where we get into the site visits, again, as a, a reminder, some sample site visit questions. But again, you know, after that second round of interviews, you decide who you, basically, that's when you're going to be deciding. Oh, the second round of interviews, not as structured, but still structured. You know, they're different because most likely we'll have the candidate interacting with a lot more people than you would at the first, during the first round of interviews. You know, and there may be, if you have, if the tour of the building and maybe the buildings and district is a part of the first round of interviews, it would likely be part of the second round for sure, you know, where the people get to, as those, the two or three that you bring back for that interview. And so for them, second round interviews, you know, they'll be, chances are good they'll be in, in district for a good part of the day. You know, it's not uncommon, like, for people to come in at ten or eleven or noon and, you know, not be done until whenever, you know, they're done with the board interviews or, and our community staff input session in the evening or however it's structured. So, busy long, is that kind of what you remember from last time?
Yes, yes, we had, we took the candidates, they threw the buildings, we gave them an opportunity to interact with staff. There was a dinner, I think, with the candidates, either, that was, may have been right before the interviews. The interviews were in the evening and the dinner was before that.
Just because it's a long day and they got to have food.
Absolutely.
You know, type of thing.
There's no protocol that we have to conduct all of the interviews on the same day. Let's say we get ten candidates. I mean, you're looking at a minimum fifteen hours.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, right, you know.
So we could split it?
We could split it, yeah. I mean, you could, I mean, you, you, you have to do what you have to do, you know. But hopefully, you could get it all done in two days instead of having to go to a third day. But you know, it, the chances are good though that you'll be conducting your interviews like in, maybe in March, into, maybe sometime in March. You know, March is a snowy month. You know, something you just can't control.
January.
Something you just can't control. Well, this is true, so rain's better than snow. Uh, because, you know, then you don't have to reorganize anything type deal, but, but sometimes your best, you know, what is that, best life plans or, you know, kind of messed up by the snow. Yeah, uh, the snowstorms or whatever, but, uh, then you might have to spread it out. But generally, you know, people, boards tend to try to keep them together, close together so that you can remember everything and then keep the ball moving.
There is the state hockey tournament.
And then there's that, yeah. But that is, you know, really seriously, there are, you know, there are times when, you know, if your school has a, one of your teams is going to the state basketball tournament and, or hockey tournament and it's interview time and everybody goes. You know, we've had it happen where we rescheduled that day so that everyone can go, because that says a lot about who you are. And all the candidates said, I get it, you know? So they just came like the next day or on the following day or whatever. But, I mean, there are those, those are the two things that tend to kind of happen in this late winter that are, isn't typical other times of the year. So site visit questions, lots of examples there. And again, when it's time, you know, at that final second interview, that's when you'll have to decide, do we want a site visit? And if so, who do we want to visit? And then it's a matter of understanding that if you work with a consultant, they'll, you know, tell them who you want to visit, what day or days work for you, which is your first choice, second choice, third choice, because once again, it's one of those things you have, you know, they get you in. And it has to be by their schedule, et cetera. But then be prepared to, and yours as well. Yeah, but be prepared to, you know, tell them who you want to visit with and they'll line those interviews up for you. You know, if it's, it might be, the board, well, probably will always be a board chair or another board member. But depending on the person's position in the district, it may be, you know, if they're an assistant superintendent, you might be looking at a superintendent. You know, you might be looking, wanting to talk to teachers, you might want to talk to the janitor, you might want to talk to some students. But they'll arrange those appointments for you. And we think it's a good idea to reserve the right to see the full roster of names and just kind of go random. I'd like to talk to this person. And then, that's not one of those preset interviews, it's kind of one of those nice balance points. And then once you're done in, with the appointments here, then go on to the community and, and spend some time in the community. Go to the coffee shop and have some conversations with the waiters and waitresses and, you know, how are things, you know, what's your perception of the school? You know, sometimes you can go to the local newspaper and read a year's worth of newspapers. It'll tell, that tells you a lot. I mean, you can do that online too, but there's something about going in to that and asking to read it. That's a nice thing in a community. You know, convenience store. But just remember that don't ask, questions apply. And then after the committee, and that would be something that a committee of the board would do. And again, because, you know, and then when, once, you know, on a, a certain date, then you'd have to have another meeting to hear their report. Here's our observations, you know, everything lined up. It doesn't have, you know, you know, and then there would be most likely a recommendation of some kind from the committee then to offer. The position to so-and-so pending, you know, it's pending, the mutual, the negotiations of a mutually agreeable contract and the, and the passage of the boards review of the criminal background check. So it's really, you know, getting to the next step. And then you go about determining how you're going to negotiate the contract. Hopefully, you know, you'll have a good conversation before that time about salary. Hopefully there'll be any materials and consider using that as a way to market. I think it would really be, it's really helpful to just lay it out, at least not completely lay it out there, but here's where our range is. It takes away the guesswork and, but it, but it's still a negotiable thing. But, and then employment contract. Mike's been in the position for three contracts now, so it would, you know, we would recommend kind of starting over from scratch. Use the MSBA, MASA model and kind of use that as the baseline and work your way up, you know, add whatever you want to from there in terms of number of vacation days or whatever. But it's a good idea to start over fresh, because, you know, what's in a, a contract for someone who's been here nine years is stuff that that person has earned over nine years, rather than generally is what's expected right out of the gate. But one thing I will say though is the salary, it's, you know, you probably, it's, may not be any place that you'll save dollars. I'm not, I guess I didn't look to see what the salary is here.
He's, I think, he's currently the highest paid in the East Metro. He's just under two hundred thousand.
Okay. So, you know, oftentimes when superintendents leave districts, it's, may not be as much cost savings as people think. So it sort of depends, you'd have, I didn't really do an analysis of what the competition is, but that's something that you would have to be done before you think about using it as a marketing tool for one thing. Or even when it gets down to the, the actual negotiation of the contract. Make sure that you've got a good competitive salary, because it's really tough if you set it too low, it's really hard. I mean, you can make it up again, but it's a really tough thing to have to make a twenty thousand dollar bump when it should have been set at that standard to begin with. So, it's something you really have to give good thought to. So take a look at, you know, lay the two contracts side by side so you kind of know what you've got. And you probably have done this already or are thinking about it anyway. Once the, how the, he's, he or she is on contract, then we would really suggest that sometime in July, late July or August, you get together and you, and you get real clear about expectations and develop the evaluation criteria for the coming year. And the sooner you can do that, the better. That way the super, everybody's on the same page about, here's what you're going to be evaluated on one year from now. And you could have a mid-year checkpoint, which is what MSBA and MASA recommend. And it's especially helpful for new superintendents in districts.
Excellent.
And then, that kind of takes us through to the, takes us through the book, but it's, again, it has a lot of, most of the stuff that you, at least gives you a, a general starting point for so many things. But if you work with a consultant, they'll have a whole process for you with the, with the forms, et cetera. It's just a matter of filling in the blanks with your hiring criteria and those kinds of things. But if, but if you go to work yourself with, whether it's a la carte or, and then with school help, there's some good resources in here that can help give you some to bump along the way.
Sandy, getting back to very early on in the discussion tonight, given the fact that we're going, you know, it's a pretty competitive field out there the way it sounds, do you have any sense or feel from, for where we might be relative to other districts that are in the same boat as us looking for a new superintendent? I mean, you know, for example, Mike gave his announcement or announced right at the beginning of school. I would guess there's other district superintendents that did the same thing that are, you know, going out the door. And so do you have any sense of if there's a group of them out there that are ahead of us by a long shot? Or if we're progressing or they're all starting right about the same place as we, I mean, what, do you have any feel that you could provide to us as to where we might sit?
Well, I think that, well, first of all, two districts are already open and advertising and may even be closing soon or have already closed. And, and so, using that as the starting point, which is a reset type of thing, that, that almost becomes the first round or first wave. For, at least districts of the, the larger sized districts. So you would be now at the beginning of the second, which would normally be the beginning of the first wave. It's usually, you know, oftentimes you don't have two big districts open right so soon.
Given how it's, the situation is.
It's, you know, and I think it's because, and it's like you say, and in those two situations, well, one was because superintendent took a position and another left that just moved on. But in one, it's for retirement, so the retirements, I think this, you're, that's happening at a good time actually, I think for you. You know, you may not be the first run out, but I, I think you're still going to be soon enough out there that it'll be open and closing. You know, it seems that you should be able to get the work done that needs to be done upfront. You know, it seems that you should be able to get the work done that needs to be done upfront so that this could be open and it would be closing sometime in, you know, late, you know, early March at the latest probably.
Okay, I was just concerned about being too far behind the eight ball, you know, relatively speaking.
It would be too soon though for you to, to say flat out that we're gonna get an interim for a year.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I think, I think there's too, too much time, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I, I wasn't going there.
Yeah, I know, but yeah.
In terms of, you know, if we're lagging, I guess is.
You know, and the other thing is that people decide at different points in time whether or not they wanna move on from what they're currently doing. You know, so it's, it's, you know, I think more people join in as time goes on. You know, when, when they realize, or they have to, sometimes they have those conversations of, over the holidays. You know, and they say, well, you know, things are, you know, fa- you know, if, if there's family involved and you're not supposed to think about it in the hiring, but at home, they're, they're talking, well, you know, Johnny's gonna graduate this year, or Suzie. Is, is this a good time for us to move on, or so-and-so is gonna be moving into junior high, it's a good kind of break in time, so they're having some of those conversations.
But I would think a lot of the contracts have windows by which they have to give their notice of retirement or resignation or whatever, uh, do they not, I mean, ours? Mike's does, does it?
Yes.
Where he had to give us notice.
Yeah, he had to give us notice, well, actually.
Well, it's his third year, I suppose.
And then we had until I think November one to let him know whether or not we intended to renew the, the contract, so. Yep, and then he was supposed, I think there's a contract provision regarding his notice ahead of that if he intended to.
Cause I would think school districts wouldn't wanna be caught too far down the road for next year to be able to fill their positions.
Right, and that, there's probably some truth in that, you know, and like you say, you know, there are certain, you know, every year, um, you know, there really, you know, I once analyzed this and I had a, a number in mind of the number of people who really were out there. Of exist current superintendents who, who might possibly be looking. And I don't remember that number for sure off the top of my head because it was based on, you've got X number of people are in a first year of a contract, that's usually about, you know, every year there are about fifty-five openings in Minnesota. So if you go fifty-five stu- people were hired last year, well, they're in their first year of a contract. So another fifty-five were hired the year before, they're in year two of a contract, another fifty-five were hired, that, so by the time you've done the math on that, you've got a hundred and eighty, about a hundred and seventy-five superintendents. There are hundred, uh, thank you for the math, that's good, and, you know, there are, and there are three hundred and twenty-nine, so you're almost at half of them are in your one, two, or three of a, of a contract. So they're not, may or may not be wanting to look on, and you've got another group of people who are, are reaching, this is maybe their, their point in time where they are ready to, um, retire. So then you've got a, a certain number of people, maybe another fifty-five at the top who are like, you know, I'm, I'm happy where I'm at and I'm not, we're gonna be moving on. I'm, I'm going to, I'd like, I'll, I'll just stay here and I'll, I'll retire from here and that's just fine. So then you've got two hundred people, uh, and then you've got a certain number of superintendents out there who work for multiple districts, so you take out another, you know, and next thing you know, that the pool of people who might have an interest every year kind of goes down a little. But that's why you really need that, those extra people from outside the pool who are assistants, superintendents, you know, principals, other people, you know, to take a good look at as possibilities in some cases. I mean, I mean, it, but that number is, sometimes not as big, great as we think.
This is really a Janet question, have we done anything yet to identify as far as for the salary range that we would offer? Um, the comparable districts like, you know, St. Water, Ozzy.
Well, when we negotiated his last contract two, two and a half years ago, we got the comparables of what all of the East Metro superintendents were making. So we, we know that data, it's three years old now, but I'm sure Linda can go on out and get that data updated for us again. And then we try to find if we wanna be mid-range, I mean, that's what Mike's philosophy on paying his cabinet has always been, that, you know, you don't wanna pay them at the highest end, you don't wanna pay them at the low, you wanna keep them kind of mid-range, so. But we can easily get that data for comparable.
But it doesn't matter district size, I mean, would we, uh, take a look at Montomede's superintendent?
I mean, that was on the list, but we know, I mean, we, we don't, we include St. Paul and Minneapolis, or Duluth, but, uh, you know, we, we include, and Roseville's very similar to us, there's a lot of, a lot of different, which are similar to us, so. We can take those factors into account.
Okay.
And I was just curious for my fellow board, board members, cause I'm used to the backwards design in the classroom, what do you wanna achieve? What's the last possible date we wanna have this person in place? Like, I assume it's not June thirtieth.
And that is exactly the right question to ask, when do we want that person on contract?
I need something clear in my head, so, cause I looked at, the reading I've done looked at, you know, they recommend four to six months, I was looking at like a four month process. But do we have a, a date clear in our head that this is?
Sandy was using a kind of a hypothetical timetable, which to me sounded like something that we should be aiming for, where we're doing the interviews in March. And perhaps by April first, April fifteenth, we should make an offer to our preferred candidate, if we can get that accepted, then we negotiate the contract, get that all in place. Because they're gonna need time too, to, um, wind up whatever.
Yeah, so we're really looking, hopefully aiming for that end of April.
I would think so, what do you think Sandy?
Yeah, you know, um, you know, I still think that if, you know, when you, is, is it a regular, you know, that the sooner you can make your decisions about the consultant piece or how that's gonna play out. That if you're at, if it's open during January and February, you, you could really be having someone on contract by, cause that's, that's the great question, you know, begin with the end in mind and then back up from there type of thing. I would, I would make, you wanna make sure you're done by April fifteenth, to the extent possible, and then play with that or April first, and play with that in your mind and see what happens. Once everything else lines up here, how close can you be to that? You know, and if you, if you can run, you know, uh, you know, with, with a well-thought-out search and, and have it, uh, the application deadline close sooner so that you can, uh, be done more at the end of March, that's great too. Um, or, or if you feel like you need to take a little bit longer, that April fifteenth is kind of a nice guide.
April fifteenth, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Tax day.
Yeah, tax, yeah, I was thinking that too, but, um, in terms of making the offer or, or having the candidate selected.
Or possibly being done, yeah, depending, yeah, I mean, either way, it kind of sits you in a good, kind of a sweet spot there. If you can, it, but, you know, depending on if things, cause it, you know, it's only the twenty-second of November. And if you can, um, line things up so that you can have that, um, by early, you know, like by the tenth of December, make a decision about the consultant, that, that's like two weeks out. If you can make that decision, then you could have that, if you make, if you hire, wanna work with a consultant, then they could work with you right away the next, cause then they wanna get going, generally, you may wanna get going right away. Cause you would talk about that, a time, a possible timelines with them when they come in. And, and then you would be able to say, well, we'd like to have a planning meeting soon because one of the things we wanna do, even though we may not be fully ready to market it is, you know, see if we can at least post the, uh, hold it opening. Um, if not on MSB's website, at least then the leader, you know, um, you know, to, to, as a kind of a holding place, if, hey, by the way, we're, we're looking, but check back in a week, the brochure will be ready then, or something to that effect. Um, and then, and then you're ready to really market it and get everything out there, hopefully by the holidays would be, by the twenty-third of, if, one month from now. It, it seems like you could be able to almost have everything ready to go.
That'd be nice to have it done by the fifteenth.
You get it out there posted and, yeah.
Whether it's realistic, well, that, that would be awesome.
But you know, that, but that's just kind of, that's a possibility, so. But you know, once you settle on something, then you might have, the, then the reality might come in to play a little bit, uh, you know, like driving schedules and, and those kinds of things. But still, I see things moving pretty fast out there once, once you make your decision one way or another, where, where you wanna go.
Any other questions for Sandy, even though we know where you are, we have your number, so we can always track you down, but does anyone else have any questions for Sandy tonight?
Yeah, just a quick one, uh, do you see, uh, a lot of special board meetings on the part of boards going through the selection process? I would think so.
Yeah, you mean, it, you mean as, uh, for a board to do their work that way versus trying to, uh, get it done in a regular meeting, is that what you're asking?
Well, in, in terms of, you know, hitting certain milestones, timelines to be able, because, you know, we only meet twice a month. In December, we only meet the beginning of the month or, or the second Tuesday of the month, so then we're off, you know, until.
Now, that can change though, yeah, this meeting got called on less than a week's notice, so.
Right, you know, for the most part, I, I would venture to guess that almost everything you're gonna do for search related is gonna be a special meeting.
That's, yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking too.
This will be what George and I went through, and I kind of feel for Scott, Marge and Ellen, you joined this board thinking, well, there's gonna be two meetings a month, wrong. In the early part of your tenure, it's gonna be very busy for.
And then we have a levy.
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta stack it up, and that's why it would be even all the more awesome to get this well on its way or wrapped up early on, rather than later.
Exactly. Well, any other questions for Sandy? Sandy, I wanna thank you so much, your presentation was excellent and the, the written materials are gonna be enshrined in my house. All right, um, we do have an official meeting, so is there a motion for adjourn?
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
And I'll second that, we are adjourned, thank you so much. Let me turn our recorder off here.